All right, well, call commission meeting to order. First item today is the pledge of allegiance. Would you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty. How's the agenda, Lisa?
Um, everything is fine. We've got a couple of people that are listed on here, like Mr. Noel and Mr. Lau, that won't be attending in person, they won't be able to, but I can pass line information they gave me to you guys, but otherwise I don't think, I don't anticipate a change.
Okay. Okay, got a motion to approve the agenda and set it for today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you're first up.
Yeah.
State who you are and what you are and.
Brandon Ralph, the Rich County Road Supervisor.
Okay. What you got going?
I guess we're here for the financing on the new purchase of the new road grader.
Okay. Do you have those bids or do we have them?
Uh, you had them.
Can you go get my hair?
No, it's right here. Um. I believe we had a discussion about financing it and I believe we, I think we'll go ahead and finance that through Caterpillar. They seem to have a decent financing package there, um, five point nine nine percent. Did you, John, did you end up with that?
Let me look, sorry. Didn't realize we were gonna be providing the information.
We were looking at it. I think we decided we put a hundred and fifty thousand down on it and finance for the next, for the next four years.
Were we getting one of the used ones or a new one?
It's a new one.
New ones.
The new one.
Okay. Yeah, let me see what the price was. I can pull up last month's agenda.
And we haven't even, we haven't even been talking, considering trading, have we? We're gonna keep our own.
No, at this point.
Is that good?
That was, that was the plan, yeah.
We, we just.
So when we got one down, we're not.
We're not hobbled with.
I don't have a copy of the bids you brought in.
We had it just when we were talking two days ago. That's tonight. I don't know, I thought I had it.
Is that different than what you guys had last time you asked and you went with a different quote?
This, I have a copy of the bid.
That's the one we're purchasing.
We approved, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, that's what we need.
I don't think I have the.
He gave us a, a, uh, proposal for the financing.
Yeah.
That's right, it's.
That, it was different and I don't have that one. That was just the machine we're buying the price, but the proposal for the financing was different.
Anyway, I, we know we're, so I think the motion is go ahead and approve the purchase of the line. Yep. Uh. What is it, one forty? One fifty.
One fifty.
The one fifty road grader, um, for a price of with the, what was it, four hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, we put a hundred and fifty thousand down on that and finance, finance the remainder with, um, uh, with the case financing at five point nine nine percent.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. Motion is to go ahead and finance and buy the one fifty road grader for that amount stated. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. You're gonna have to go to work now.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Pay for that.
Yeah. I want to gravel.
Well, there's no one that gets here, so we can come sign it real quick.
Make sure Annalisa has the other bids, so we have more than a bit and.
Yeah, I'm sure she has all them copies that we had when we approved it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Been keeping cattle guards cleaned out?
Trying to. We still got a couple we need to get to if they're not froze too bad. If we can pull them out, I'll make a mess, but.
Yeah, bust them up.
Yeah.
Did you ever go out the Circle H?
I never made it out there yet.
Maybe we put panels across that one because they were jumping out.
I see. I went and looked at it and it's just the first two rails because we cleaned it just not long ago, but.
Two, two on each side and that just gives them enough to, I think they can make it.
That's the bad thing with, a lot of these cattle guards are narrow. And bigger cows nowadays, they, all it takes.
Bail over.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, we need to get down to that one, one over the Bear Lake for yield, if we can. Anyway, it's all I have.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, I was gonna ask you. Um. So Trevor said to, in order to, to get that ordered, also he needs an email from one of you, just saying, yeah, we're gonna, uh, finance and buy it so he can get it ordered and get it ready.
So you don't need money to order it?
No, you don't need nothing, no signature or anything. You just need to official word from one of you, commissioner, you know.
Okay. Yeah, give him one of us is whoever you want.
Do you know his email right now or no?
Um, I think it's on this.
I can write something down and send it out from Sam.
I guess not, yeah, right there.
Because we need to talk to him anyway about some other stuff. For the dump.
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty, thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. Utah State Parks.
Well, hollering.
How's it going, Richard?
Yeah, how you guys doing?
Good. Your chair, is your chair right now?
Apparently.
What size T-shirt?
Large.
How you doing that?
Good, how you?
These guys might be involved in you, so.
Maybe we have a little discussion involving you.
Oh, all right.
What size is?
Not a two X.
I'm a two, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor, was that paper one more time for the grader?
Yeah. Yeah.
You can keep that, you can keep.
Go ahead and tell us who you, state your name and stuff for the record and.
Richard Drospec with Utah's Bear Lake State Park, the park manager. We have Aaron Nelson, who's the assistant park manager. And we're here to, uh, kind of give our, our semi-annual type report. This is our big one usually because it's after summertime and we can show what we've done and talk about a few things. Bill, what size T-shirt would you like?
Well, extra large is the only thing I can get over my belly, so.
Is it extra large or is it two X there or something?
Well, Sims is a, that's only, that's one X short for Sim.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Uh, well, we like this because we're also, uh, like, hey, this is our, our state park. And so you'll notice on the front it has our logo. And then on the backside is all forty-six state parks with the figures are stated on it. All right, so briefly here, so we have a little our time, but you can look at the reports of our, uh, park visitation figures and you can compare this. Since they do everything basically on the fiscal year, it ended on June thirtieth. But you look over the, the past years, uh, fiscal year twenty-one was the biggest hit of COVID time and we had a lot of people coming and that was our day use. It's a huge increase in day use. Um, and then we can see how that kind of compares down to our, uh, the revenues that we've generated. Uh, we are a state agency that legislature basically requires us to, uh, cover all of our operating expenses through the monies that we collect. And we're one of those parks that does do that very well. Our revenues have gone down a little bit the last couple of years, but we, we contribute some of that, a little downturn, not quite as many people, like I said, from the COVID time for day use. But, uh, for two summers now, we haven't had, um, North Eden open for camping. And this past summer, we, about, about two summers, three, about three summers, we haven't had North Eden open for camping. And the last two summers, we haven't had Rainbow Cove open for camping. So that, we have, we figured some of our, um, drop in revenue would be for that, but that will start to change.
So in twenty twenty-two, what would your drop in revenue be? Um, you think some of that could be contributed to the fact that the water was down and there was a lot of people that could access the beach without going to your day use service?
You know, when we see the water high versus low, there's, I don't see a significant change in visitation. There is a little bit. Um, when the water was low, we actually were able to put more vehicles down at Rondville Beach because we allowed them to park.
Okay, so you think it equals out as far as that goes?
Yeah. You know, this past year, we, we couldn't park on the beach, but we were still, um, finding places to park, within the parking, kind of overflow parking areas. So I, uh, I, it's, it's hard to say. I think there's a little bit, a little bit less visit, just overall day use visitation to the whole parks, so East Side, um, Marina. Camping, we, we've noticed camping from twenty twenty-one, especially like at Cisco Beach, we've had lesser weekdays with as many people as we had in twenty twenty-one. Or twenty-one, twenty-one, that would have been the year, summer of twenty twenty-two, actually, but. Um, but, but partly we also, as I said, we closed down North Eden, but that'll start, that'll come online this year, so. As a park, we do pretty good. We also, you know, we had an increase in expenses because, uh, two years ago, they granted us the, our full-time maintenance position. So that increased our, you know, personnel costs on the top, top end of that, but we're still, we're still doing quite well. The year that we had the highest profit, we didn't have the full-time maintenance position in that budget year, so. And then you can kind of see our, our, our revenue breakdowns. Um. We compare that to like our Wasatch back parks or even Hallow Island and Dead Horse Point. Uh, day use is their highest revenue producer. Uh, here at Bear Lake, we're still camping is our highest revenue producer. We're far enough away from the Wasatch front that we're destination location, so most of the people come to stay at least one night or more. Whether they're in search or rentals or, um, you know, in, in the campground, so. That kind of goes over those parts. And then we'll talk about some things, of course, uh, we, we did have our fourteenth annual Cisco Disco and we're planning for our fifteenth annual Winter Fest. Remember back fifteen years ago between, um, I can't remember what's her name now? The CVP version?
Tammy?
No, before.
Before?
Uh, Melinda?
No, Rock was her husband's name.
Ah.
Judy.
Oh, Judy, yeah.
Judy Holbrook. She's the one that came to me and says, what can we do to talk to you about this winter thing? And so it's hard to believe that we're in this, this coming January, we get fifteenth year of doing that. Uh, we have a fellow that did this twelfth annual swim across the lake. And then we did have a, a Raspberry Day's Boatlight Parade. And then we've has a little over forty special use permits for family units, camping and other type of special events. Um, which one of them included, if you notice, we have six little, they call them cozy casitas on the east side, but little, they're a little tiny house that has beds in it. They look pretty nice and and we spoke with them yesterday and we're looking to renew that special use permit and see if they can, uh, even do better this coming year. As for accidents and search and rescues, we actually had a lot of, we'll call them quick, minor search and rescue, especially early in the summer with cooler water. One of the things that we were finding a lot with those, they were mostly non-motorized and they got out there in the wind and the cold water and wouldn't have life jackets. Not wearing it, but they didn't even have it with them, so. Fortunately, we didn't have any water-related fatalities this year. Yeah, we got a little bit of December left. We still got anglers that go out. Um, and only a few minor boating accidents, nothing really major. And same thing on the OHB side. Very, very fortunate that way. Um, case our, now our, our major projects in the parks, you're, you're familiar with, um, the Marina project. Um, moving along a little slower than originally the Kimble Horn, our engineers anticipated would go. But the meeting yesterday, well, if you, if you went to the, if you heard from, um, the open house that was done about a month ago, they were saying, looks like construction September of this coming year. About a year behind what was originally planned. Um, in meeting yesterday, they're like, oh, things are moving forward because we have to get two permits, one from the Corps of Engineers, of course, and one from the BLM for where they're taking soils from to help build the dikes. And, uh, that mining permit is actually moving along faster than the Corps of Engineers permits, along with the, the wetlands mitigation. Right now, it's looking like they're gonna work with something on North Eden Creek with Trout Unlimited and Shitla and I think another, another agency, but that's moving along too. So they're, that, yesterday's meeting, like, we need to start making plans because there's very good potential that we could, we start seeing some off-site construction stuff going on as early as May. And I'm like, ah, then we got a plan for how we're gonna impact visitors throughout summer, so we can keep that impact down low.
You'd rather have them start in September?
No, I don't have them start sooner, but just to find a way that we can.
Just let you know.
Not take away our overflow parking because that'll create a huge issue, but that's one of the areas that they're planning to have a staging area for a lot of the soils. If their plan goes through, they'll actually move soils from our southwest beach area over to the overflow parking and then have a conveyor belt actually bring it across the highway. So that no big, so that no big trucks are carrying stuff in, in our current Marina side of things. So that's kind of our, like, needs plan, I'll let you see it.
Yeah.
Um, east side, our North Eden project is, uh, nearing completion. It's virtually done. We've been waiting on, uh, Rocky Mountain Power to actually, uh, hook up the power and they finally started coming in there. Uh, with that, they should have power in and be able to connect the water system so we can do all the pump tests and and then the cleanliness tests and such, so I'm hoping that's done in a couple of weeks. Um, we'll probably have a soft opening in early May and then the ribbon cutting ceremony that we would quite like, that's where you guys are invited to, probably right before or more of the weekend. Then Rainbow Cove is starting up again, kind of restarting. Um, you know, a year and a half ago, we grubbed out a hundred and sixty acres of phase brush. Uh, we had some delays because the, the Marina construction was saying, hey, those soils are good, we can use them in the Marina project, but then they they started doing some figures, like, if we got a place closer, then we don't, doesn't cost us as much to haul it. So that delayed us a little bit, but, uh, we're gonna restart on that. We still do need more money for it. But we're gonna realign the new, the road, get some grading done. If you've seen the north beach area, we're, we're gonna, um, improve access to that north beach, improve the parking and then the additional parking right there by the launch ramp on the south side of the launch ramp would be the, the first big focus. We will put back in twenty-one campsites. So depending on how long it takes them to get the more monies to complete that project, we will be able to start renting out campsites. Probably not this coming summer, but for the summer twenty twenty-five, we should have those online. And then at Rondville Beach with the water system, uh, over the past two years, we will have spent probably nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reseal the tank lid. Uh, we're just finishing up kind of a total redo of new pumps and plumbing inside the pump house. Uh, last year, we had to replace the wellhead pump, but, uh, we spent quite a bit of money and time on that one, uh, partly to meet, uh, drinking water's requirements. So hopefully by the end of December, we'll have that all done, except for one thing, is we gotta bring in, the high-flow pump requires larger power lines. And then whether the current one will handle. But it should have, once it's done, it will have a chlorinator if we need to use it and it will have a SCADA system for us to be able to monitor.
I think you had enough connections to need chloration.
No, it was the testing. Our tank lid, we, our biggest culprit was our tank lid, had some cracks in it. Since we had divers come in, they cleaned the tank, they did an inspection, they said the tank structurally is sound, but it needs to be resealed. And once we got it resealed, uh, we haven't had.
Good.
So, but, but drinking, I, I'm just surprised at how old that system is, that they didn't have a chlorinator, but drinking water said regardless, you're gonna have a chlorinator.
Oh.
So that'll be in hopefully, you know, very soon too, as a part of that project. Okay, so some issues we have, where's Brandon? One of the things is when, when we completed Cisco Road, right there at First Point, they put a culvert in and it wasn't in the exact same place that the previous culvert was under the previous road. And for some reason, the last three years, we, when we've had some storms that have just kind of hit right above that canyon where the towers are, they've come down and we've had some flash flooding coming through and that culvert right now brings the water right down the place where we park and also the, the road that comes down by where our, our, you kind of call our camp post, the access road to come into the launch ramp. So I don't know if there's something that we can team up and work with to help either get another culvert, then we can take it under our roads, but where that culvert comes out right now is just bringing a lot of.
Right in the middle of the curve.
What's that?
The one in the middle of the curve.
Right by First Point.
Yeah, First Point. It's like right on the curve, um, before the road was done, I think it was further to the south. But this one, they, they put right on where it comes out now, for some reason, we're seeing a lot of water come down and.
Well, we can't move it, can you?
No, I wouldn't try to move it.
So you're just.
Help, help us out with taking it from where it comes out and getting it down below our roads.
Oh.
So that's just, if you want to meet with us, we can look at the site and.
Yeah, we could do something with that. Probably just put in another culvert.
You kept putting a lot of fill underneath it?
Shouldn't, because it's, what, it's only a couple of feet lower than the highway now, yeah?
And then there's actually on the upper level, there's actually going to divest down, so it helps funnel it, but we didn't think it was gonna be as much as coming down, bringing, especially bringing debris down.
Most years it probably won't.
I mean, I've been, I've been here seventeen years and last, it's only the last three years that we've noticed it do this, so.
Okay.
All right, um, I think the other part, as you look at things, um, our park's growing in size, especially compared to others and and there's two positions that we'd like to see it, on the second full-time maintenance position, because we're gonna have thirty-five campsites, one group site coming online with, uh, North Eden. We're gonna get a bigger Marina, basically a second Marina, but we'll operate it as one operation, but it's still gonna have, you know, double our maintenance on it. Um, and then also the amount of monies and stuff that we collect, creating our full-time office manager, accountant position, make it full-time instead of long-term seasonal. I got it kind of twice there. It was, the, the, the collegiate invasive species interdiction efforts that we have with EWR. Uh, we're gonna make sure that it's important. We don't want to see those muscles in. Um, they made that work with UDOT and got the pullout lanes here at the summit of Lake Town Canyon. But they really struggled to find staffing. And for us, up until this year, we've struggled to find staffing, uh, but we've, we've, we attribute, one of our things is, is the park, we got two, um, little tiny homes. One that we got set up and we used as female summer seasonal housing. And this is the first year that we didn't really have to struggle to really find somebody. We got a second one that came in, we'll have it set up and it'll become male housing. So we easily put two in each one. We can put four if we bump into it.
Where, where are they located?
At Rondville Beach.
In back?
The back, yeah. We're, we're, ten or more years ago, we created three RV pads, kind of for the intense for seasonals to use. But most of our collegiate seasonals don't have access to an RV. We got these tiny homes and they were, so four of the ones were working good, so we're expecting the second one to work good, so we're putting it right down on top of those RV pads because all the utilities are right there.
So you're, there is no more RV pads and you're putting these permanent, more permanent, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're, they're semi-permanent. I mean, they're still on their wheels.
But the RV pads went away for these tiny homes.
Well, they're on, they're on top of the RV pads, so.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we're, we're using.
You really didn't increase your capacity, you just increased availability, I guess.
Right, there is, we, we did receive delivery of one tiny home that, that our other places have, they call them a cottage. But when it gets set up, it will be like a, I, I call it a suite in the park. It'll be a little tiny house that will be rented out as lodging. And we've created a space, um, there in our Big Creek area that's been open. And we've actually got a second space because they, they tell us that we're gonna get a second one, but we just, we just don't know when.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they be better used for your staff versus random out?
It's possible, but we, as I said, we, we got the two, the, the, we, you know, we were asking for two for housing.
Aye.
And then they came back, says, you're gonna get three. Two for lodging, which is the rent of the park and one for housing. We're like, but we asked for two for, they're like, well, do you want to tell them no?
No.
So we told, we didn't tell them no. We said, yeah, we'll take them. And then guess what they came up with? They came back with a second one for lodging, for, for, for housing, but, uh, they took one away, one of ours away for lodging because down at Echo, when they, when they brought that over to be a state park, they made a lot of them. When they when they brought that over to be a state park, they made a lot of improvements and. They needed a couple of extra tiny homes to complete their project. We said, take one of those and we can get ours coming later, so. There'll be something new that we're that uh hopefully that one will be online for next summer and we'll see how it goes. And fewer other parks have them and we're gonna let them be the guinea pigs and we learn from their lessons rather than. Us learning on ourselves ourselves, but they're they're a nice little, you know, uh place. Uh, okay, you you know, we still have days that our park or, you know, the Marina parking capacity. Rondel Beach, um with the high water, higher water, we we saw days that we kind of hit our capacity. We we didn't really turn anybody away, except that the Marina we did, but around the way we didn't really turn anybody away. Uh, we just kept finding places for in the park. Yeah, still on the list is, you know, affordable housing for full-time and seasonal employees. We're fortunate when we got Justin, he had a place to stay. Uh, but it's an issue that a lot of our state parks are having is having affordable housing for full-time employees.
Well, that's what I was wondering why, well, I guess for full-time employees though, I was thinking during the summer, I mean. It seems to be the big drawback for everything to be able to fully staff things is is for places to live.
Well, like I said, the the ones we've had, we had, we had four females in it at one time. So we we had them bunked up, we had four, uh two and two in each bedroom. And so we have that capacity to, we could we could house eight eight people, we need to with the ones that we currently have. If it gets that bad, we could convert the other ones over to a similar situation. Some of our parks where they struggle to get uh full-time staff to find housing, they've actually let them use the tiny homes as their house. It isn't bad if you're single or maybe married, but when you start getting kids, they're just not, for most people, they're not. Big enough. Alright, so the Marina, we still, one thing we learned is as they're going through the project. Um, you know, our bottleneck has been the current launch ramp. And so we did some studies this summer with the engineering company and. We found that most people, when they get to the 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 top of the prep lane and they're ready to launch. They can turn and back down and have their boat launched and off the launch ramp in about five minutes. Aside of that, when they come to retrieve their boat, we found that we're twelve to fifteen minutes. So a lot of times, this number, we didn't see a lot of backup where we, the highway, but I know two summers ago, we had several days. Where where we were backed up, even with those two new uh long queuing lanes, we were backed up and that's when people were retrieving. So that's one thing that we're learning. But also the new launch ramp in the new Marina is going to be approximately a hundred and forty feet wide. Our current one is seventy. So. Or actually, if you look at this, if you use the same size, we're tripling our capacity. So that'll take care of a lot of issue, especially when it comes time to retrieval. Okay, and then we still have. I've been asking for money through our motorboat access process, but to replace the the five original lanes of concrete on that were. Poured out in the nineteen sixties. They are cracking, a lot of cracks and crumbling a little bit, it's holding together for the most part. But that's the same thing, I'm still trying to figure, there's another source we can go after to. Get that replaced. Uh, around the beach, the parking capacity is is always an issue. Um, we'd like to get another restroom on our day use area. And we have a plan where we if we can get it funded, we could renovate our comfort campground and actually increase the size of it, utilize some of our. Their space that right now is currently not being used. Um, east side, we talked with Brandon about the the First Point culvert under this under Cisco Road. First Point Rainbow Cove, we still have uh parking, especially for vehicles with boat trailers. I saw several Saturdays at First Point, they're like, wow, they're they're parking on the bike path, they're. It's just tight, but hopefully one thing with Rainbow Cove, once we get it done, we'll have an enlarged parking area there that we won't have as big of an issue. Um, with our developments, you know, especially what's coming up along uh Rainbow Cove, if there's any chance for that sewer development on the east side. That would be a big help. If not, we'll we'll move it forward once we get a second round of money and we'll have our, we'll develop a. One of the one of the advanced sewage management systems, because our intent is to have three RV dump stations on our Rainbow Cove. Uh, operation with another set of money. Uh, then if you haven't heard, lastly, um, there's a push through DNR that right now, there's four. Agencies within natural resources that perform law enforcement. State parks, wildlife, state lands and. Yeah, division of recreation. And I know there's a push to create one DNR law enforcement. Division rather than have four separate divisions with law enforcement. So in a sense, that would take law enforcement out of parks, out of wildlife, out of state lands, out of recreation and. Have it none under one agency. Still going through the process of that, uh. Director Joel Ferry has given his gracious to it to start moving forward on it. Um, the DNR law enforcement chief. Uh, Todd Royce is working on on that. Uh, they they have made a proposal to the governor's budget. Um, to to start that, so we'll see how that works out and how it affects us and et cetera, so.
How would that work? You guys would just all be combined into one?
Well, the law enforcement side would be combined into one, but state park still has to run.
So they'd pull your authority as a law enforcement officer, okay.
And right now that the talk is, is kind of like, you know, if you got like a UPD or something. The new division of law enforcement, it's all state parks, you want us to do law enforcement, we're gonna charge you to do law enforcement in your parks. That's the that's the part that's kind of hard to see how it all pans out and figures out. Because this, you know, right now we have four law enforcement officers that work well with the county. We work very efficiently. There's times of the year when law enforcement, more law enforcement needed, there's times of the year like this time of year where we can do work on more projects. Yeah, are we doing law enforcement? Hmm, not as much as this time of year, but we're we have it for our busy times. Um, so it's a, we'll see how it goes. There's a chance that there could be lesser numbers of law enforcement officers available.
So would the responsibility, like in our area, it would fall back onto the county to, or the state would just employ just law enforcement?
Just DNR law enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, so they would just be, instead of being focused on the park, it would just be strictly be law enforcement, so.
Can't take people's money to let them in or help out, yeah.
So so, yeah, the law enforcement would do, you know, wildlife law enforcement, state lands law enforcement. Um.
Still law enforcement in the park.
Uh, recreation, that's law enforcement for boating in O H V and then whatever law enforcement is needed in the park.
When you say state lands, that includes sovereign lands?
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, so that's coming down the road, I don't know if you've heard about it, much of it about it yet. I don't know if Aaron brought up the Sheriff Stacy, but it's. It's gonna be good, there is a budget proposal through the governor's budget that that will be addressed in this coming legislative session, so.
I think Todd Royce, the DNR law enforcement chief, was at the Sheriff's Association meeting a month or two back and talked to Dale about it, so. Dale's at least heard of it, seen up some of it, so.
Yeah, so it's hard to say, you know, would would we have an the an exact number for number of law enforcement officers? It's hard to say, we've heard things that like on the Y S H back, they're actually they'd actually reduce the number of law enforcement officers doing DNR law enforcement. Here, I've heard that we'd have the same number, but it's like, where do you figure that out?
Yeah. So I have a couple of questions, um. Do you have any uh guess of how much it would cost to do your cement or not redo the ramps?
Uh, I gotta look back. Uh, I think I had a quote from one of our local people that would be about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. For all of them?
The last one, to to do the five. And, you know, timing is right now, the water's ain't high enough that. We you wouldn't be able to go down all the way. Best time was the water got low like it did, last fall got low enough. If you did the fall, we could have, you know, not last fall, the fall of the year before.
Yeah.
It was low enough that you could have just pulled them out and redid the concrete then without having to try to. Build some type of dam to keep water from getting in there.
Um, and then you mentioned Trout Unlimited, I know they're working on that. You said, do you have, I know you don't work for them, but do you have any timeline of when they're gonna start doing their stuff?
They still gotta get the core engineers to, um, you know, call it, sign off on the plan.
Yeah.
And then.
Cause that's gonna be cool, but I we we, that was a couple of years ago, I feel like we approved it.
Yeah, it'll it'll help improve more of their plan for.
And that drainage is not very good there.
Of the the North Eden Creek.
Yeah.
But that's 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 the intent right now. That's that's where they're they're pushing towards is the the riprap on the new Marina will cover part of the mitigation. But we've not all of what the corps would require us to do, so then. North Eden Creek's probably the closest project to the lake. And closest in readiness to where the funds could help out, so.
And then on Rainbow Cove, you said you might look for other monies. Just let us know if you need any help at the state, you know, lobbying for that kind of stuff. I know you have tons of other projects, but.
Yeah, I.
That's one thing we can do is just go back for money.
I mean, um, well, beginning of last spring, they're like, we need an additional eleven million. Um, to to complete it how we we've had it designed.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
But it'll, like I said, it'll have an advanced sewage management system, it'll be really enhance, at least the park operations on the east side, because then anybody from. Um, South Eden Campground to North Eden Campground, if they wanna slide down from Idaho, they could. They could utilize those dump stations, which we don't have that currently on the east side.
Yeah.
And I don't think Idaho has it at their park either, so. Right now, if they wanna do it, they they can come down from the east side, they can stop at Rondel and.
Yeah.
Use that, but we're trying to create that over there, cause we're, cause we are creating more campsites, so. Any other questions?
Well, it's good report.
Yeah. Surprises me you were down that far, that's a lot of. From the COVID year.
Revenue wise or visitation, is it visitation? Visitation, uh, well. Our folks just thought like do it, it's supposedly based upon revenue and so. I don't know, I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think our visitation has dropped that much.
I didn't think so either, just as a living there.
No, but I I said I, when I first came here, we used to have our own traffic counters that we would. Take the numbers off of them and we had a little formula, we'd give it to them and then. Eight, nine, ten years ago, they just said, we're not doing that anymore.
Well, one of the things to just to thought on it real quick is where it's revenue based, that COVID year, we had people staying. Two weeks, three weeks, week at a time at Cisco Beach. Now it's two, three days, so they're still here, it's just they're not here as long. So that could be one thing playing into that.
Yeah. Yeah, with, yeah, COVID years, we saw people that would, hey, I got, I got internet access, I could, you know, I can work from my trailer and they would spend longer times. Alright, thank you. Hope you did work. Aaron, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Mr. S, how are you?
Good, how are you? That that uh uniform looks good on you.
Hey, thank you. So I was gonna give you guys just a quick, I'll try to be as brief, I know.
Is there not a standard of how long this thing can?
Uh, I haven't heard any complaints yet, um, so. Um, I'll I'll take that as with no. Um, just a couple of things, I was gonna give you a, just a like an update on the amount of fires we had. It was obviously a low fire year. Got three roadside fires in the county, one unattended campground. One structure fire in Woodruff that involved some grass, um, and then we ended up having four single tree. Um, type fires caused by lightning that were around our county line, so that was pretty much the. Most of the fires.
Too too nice and wet of a year.
It was a good year for that, for sure, so.
Did you end up out of the county very much?
No, um, I did end up in Cache, Morgan. Basically, our neighboring adjoining counties helping him on some small stuff, but most of the time. We were here, Box Elder didn't have the amount of fires they usually have and they usually are always asking for additional R resources, whatever, but. It was a pretty slow year for that, all over the northern end of the state, so. Um, one other update I wanted to kind of notify you guys on, so Rick Larson, our assistant. There's some issues with the retirement system, so he's planning on retiring from the school board this spring. That's going to, I guess there is a, he cannot, once he retires. He will not be able to work for any government system that uses URS for, I think.
Year.
A year, so, um, I I don't know if you guys have heard anything legislatively. I know there were some talk, Kara had some stuff last year, if I remember right.
There's some legislation.
Yeah, so.
See if it gets any traction.
Yeah.
And that will be, it will actually be a tiered type thing, um, if you're in law enforcement, it would be three months. If you're in, um, I don't remember, but it goes from three to six to a year.
Okay.
So, and I think Rick may follow in that at least six month thing.
Okay.
Which would be helpful.
For sure.
We'll see.
Yeah, so we'll just address that when we get there, right?
They should have traction for that.
Well, the big, the big issue is URS comes back and just says, it's just, there's a huge amount of. There's a a big price tag to it. They're the ones that are putting squelch in it. It's it's the retirement system.
Yeah, and it's just a tough thing when you got guys with a lot of experience, I mean, you're spending here twenty plus years and it's just really tough to. You know, and then you tell tell somebody to go do something else for a year, a lot of guys are gonna go do something else. It's just tough to hold them in law enforcement, everything, same thing. Um, the other thing, uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan or the CWPP, that comes up this year. It's gonna be something I'll be working on. I don't know if you guys are all familiar with that, but it's. It's basically a plan that outlines like various problem areas um in the county for like communities at risk. Um, probable ignition areas or places we've had fires in the past. And a CWPP is basically the foundational document to the CWS. Um, which is the Cooperative Wildfire System. That's like the county or any agency, like the county has one, various cities, it's like their insurance policy, like if a major. Mill multimillion dollar wildfire starts. In the county, they would, the county won't be held liable, so it's just part of that system, so we just gotta update it. I'll just be working on that and I'll try to have you guys. A draft. It's a cool program that the state does, just kind of as an insurance policy for us and, yeah, it's a good thing. So I'll just get updates on that, it'll, I'll let you guys know if I have any questions or if you guys have any input on that or projects. That you guys would wanna outline, just we'll be in touch. Um, let's see, so the Swan Creek Spring Subdivision. Um, so this is kind of a unique, I'll just give you guys each, uh, there's just some maps and some pictures. So this is kind of a unique opportunity that's come up. So the Swan Creek Spring Subdivision is part, it's right adjacent to the Little Switzerland. Um, community that's up Swan Creek Canyon. Um, I think in two thousand eighteen, if my notes are correct. This subdivision was done to help the city, um, the town of Garden City actually put their water treatment plan in. So basically, like what we have is Little Switzerland Swan Creek, it's always been an area of concern for wildfire risk. It's kind of a one-way in, one-way out, it's in a box canyon, the roads are fairly narrow. And then that fact's kind of complicated just because. The the elevation relationship to Swan Creek Spring, there's not a really good fire flow up there, so we're right up by the spring. Um, there's just really not good fire flow. If you look at these pictures, um, that are outlined, this is part of the development, so looking. From uh Garden City's treatment plant, so the road comes up. And it's actually an old access road, the access is the Utah Division of Wildlife, their Swan Creek Wildlife Management Area. They have uh really not done a whole lot with that property, um, it's kind of been there, it's a, it's a wildlife. Management area, it's like for wintering wildlife, um, hunting, you know, just general recreations allowed. That road just, it, as it goes through, it's very narrow. This fact, that's kind of been complicated, there's actually. If you look at the map outlined here, we have three new houses that have went under construction up here. So basically, we have this long dead end road. There's, it's probably about twelve feet wide, really no fire turnaround, anything like that. We also have a yurt. So what, I was meeting with Utah Division Wildlife Resources and they were. I was meeting with Utah Division Wildlife Resources and they were like coming up with some ideas to improve this. One of their ideas was to do a parking lot up there, like kind of almost like a trailhead. And then they were talking about some of these roads that go through there. They're, they're really bad, unimproved four wheeler trails. Sim, did you go up on that ambulance that we had the li- when lifeline got called in there? Were you there maybe?
This year?
It was a few years ago, I think. But it's just a, it's a real bad, uh, it's a, it, access is super limited, like no brush trucks and nothing like that going up there. The erosion issues. And then we have a problem from Bear Lake West, so this property, uh, butts up to the Idaho State Line. Bear Lake West goes up one side, so they're getting a lot of vehicle traffic, like off highway vehicle use coming from the Idaho side. So it's just been kind of an issue and they're wondering like what's the best way to manage this property? They've talked about maybe doing some road closures. Um, which I was, they were kind of asking my opinion. I was okay with the road closures, probably makes more sense for wildlife. My only worry was is, if we do do something like that, can we put a gate in so at least we could have access by ATV? If something happened up there. It's just some ideas they're kicking around and they're still working on that internally. Um, some management's changing. Um, Ben Nadalski actually got the Ogden City Mayor, so I think they're gonna be hiring a new. Regional supervisor. Anyways, it's changing, so as that develops. However, it does sound like they would be open to the fact to doing a parking lot and so. What I was thinking, like the best thing to do to kind of help this area was like about a four hundred and twenty-five foot road improvement. And do some sort of a cul-de-sac where we could do at least stage fire vehicles, turn an engine around. That kind of thing and just have us a little better access up to that.
So is this above those homes?
Mm-hmm, yep, it would be above those homes. And in the original, so this is the original plot. And Bill, you might remember this and I, cause I was, I was just talking with Mike about it. When this got done, I don't remember, this, it's kind of interesting, but it does say there was a fifty foot. Radius turnaround easement at the end, um, but that never did get constructed and I don't, you know.
And that was right on the border of, uh.
There, the division's property, yep.
Right.
Yep, and so. Looking when I'm, when I was there at the property, it's kind of an issue because of, it would be very expensive. To do that hundred, a hundred foot circle there is just, it's a, it's a pretty steep hill. If we, if we got permission, which I think the division would be okay with, to do it up on. That flat part that I've kind of circled here, it's actually already super flat and there's kind of an unimproved, it's rocky turnaround. That maybe could be, it would be a great site on a flat spot.
So is this? So this is further up on?
Yep, it, I think it's about two hundred feet into their, into their, two hundred and fifty feet roughly into their property.
Into the state?
Looks like, um, now is that, is that trail there? Is it, I guess it's open.
It's open, it's just a two track.
Right, but, but I mean, they're not, they're not trying to keep people out of there. They're letting four wheelers come through there. So that turnaround, is that just from?
From people, basically. Yeah, there's been a, you know, you have four wheelers.
Can you get a vehicle up there?
You could get a brush truck, but like any sort of a fire engine, garbage truck, any like ser- like an ambulance.
I was just wondering about a type two or an ambulance. I mean, that, we, we need to put it to that standard.
Yeah, for sure. And so that was kind of my thought is at least to get at least a couple of vehicles to pass and like to make sure an ambulance, whatever, could get up there. And I did talk with Mike. He, he thought the city would be willing to help contribute on some funding on that.
So that is that flat spot in the state side? That's what I was gonna say, you could get, surely you can get permission from them to get.
So the cul-de-sac was supposed to be right here.
Yes.
Right, right. And it's, and it's in the, I think it's actually in the record right there is where it was supposed to be and they were supposed to construct it. Now these homeowners, one of them come in and said, are you gonna do this? What are you gonna do? Yada, da, da, da. But if the better, if the better location up here. Um, and that could be, you know, like you say, a parking lot, that would, that would give you an opportunity for people to go up there and park and get. Get some access.
And just kill a couple of birds with one sound, you know.
Where can they get from here?
So that's the problem. This owner, so this property owner actually blocked this road. So this road, there was an old, old road and I, I don't think it was ever open, but there's a two track that kind of comes down, actually ties into. Let's see, I think we call that, is that lazy or rockin' A Ranch or, yeah. So that kind of tied into there, from the division's property, the roads don't go anywhere. The roads go up. Um, they, they, they've kind of been built like illegal roads built all over through just four wheeler trails through their property. And you know, one issue like we've had some accidents up there, like a place to land a helicopter. It's just an issue is that there's just.
We had a hard time finding a place that time.
And so like a parking lot like this, I mean, we could set up, you know, at, at least a water tender. Fill up trucks, we could do a dip site for helicopters. And then the division too, it would be a place that, and this was kind of their proposal, was to make this a walk-in access. Um, and I think that'd be a good thing for the community. I think people could enjoy going up through those trails. But they wanted to do, like, it would be a good spot for them to actually send people, so people knew where to park, maybe where the trail starts, that kind of thing. It'd just be a pretty good.
Well, if they, if they, you know, if there's not much of a, if there's not a lot of trails there, the walk-in access. A lot of people who'd like to do hiking and that kind of stuff don't wanna be run over by four wheelers, so, you know, an area that if they just closed it to. To.
Walk in only.
To walk in only.
I think it'd be very popular, cause I think most of our trails are places, you know, everything's basically like, there's roads and everything.
So are they, are they closing this at all for?
So seasonal, so a seasonal closure from January first to April fifteenth. And that's for wintering wildlife.
For wintering, yeah.
Yep, and then other than that, it would be open to the general public, hunting, recreation, whatever. As, as long as, yeah.
I, I know that, yeah, I know the map that shows winter, you know, winter. Basically wildlife management areas for winter, you know, there's one out.
Yeah, yep, would, yep.
And the other one was up here that, that I remembered and that's still a continued use from. The state's point of view from wildlife management.
Yep, and so, and you know, and that's kind of critical infrastructure for them to like. Wintering wildlife, like they wanna make sure it doesn't burn and do some of that. And so one thing our division did, I was gonna mention this. There is a new fund called the Wildland Urban Interface Prevention Preparedness and Mitigation Fund. And we applied for fifty-nine thousand dollars in fuel reduction that they wanted to apply. If this works out with the state, you guys, everybody's happy that we could apply, if we get the grant, we, we still don't know, it's early. But that they could apply to some fuel reduction along there, maybe help with that road construction to actually. Make a nice fuel break there. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is Idaho has been doing. Fuel reduction and fuel breaks above Bear Lake West subdivision, so. It would be very nice if somehow long term, and this might be twenty years down the road, but if we could actually tie them together. So we have something like if there was a fire up there, we have a good point of, you know, a good baseline. And that just would help both of us and then, you know, and that whole multi-jurisdictional thing, like we, we really don't wanna deal with fire going into Idaho and. Back and forth and, yeah.
But the fire doesn't.
Yep, that's right, that's right.
You know, I mean, if they've got, you know, if it starts on them and then moves over on us, what they've done doesn't, doesn't help us.
For sure.
We need to be able to, or vice versa, you know, I mean, that's the thing, if we can, if we're, if we're prepared enough that. If it comes over onto our line, you know, we've got access and we're tied into their line and.
Yep. It just, we'd be a win-win.
We've, we've gotta continue to be, um, proactive on mitigation projects, I mean. The amount of homes and the, the thing of it is, the more homes there is, there's more exposure for fire, you know, now and. Not only by, by the fact that there's homes there, but there's so much more activity that we're gonna, we're just generating. More and more.
Yes.
Possibilities of fire every time we have a, you know, and especially on these dry years, you know, I mean, it's. Doesn't take much of a spark, you know, somebody spinning rocks and boom, it's just, and there's so much traffic. So anything we can do on these mitigation projects, we need to move forward on.
Perfect.
One of the things, I talked to Dusty and he was supposed to get me a, um, a budget. And so, at this point in time, we are plugging in the numbers of last year. Um, from that budget. Now, are you aware of any changes that need to be made for that?
I, I am not. Dusty did tell, I know he was working on something yesterday. He called and mentioned, he asked me if I had any changes and I said, I don't foresee. Any changes with me personally, like I don't see any changes and where we had a low fire, I mean, nothing really happened last year. But, uh, yeah, I can follow up with him on that too, but if, I think that's probably, oh, oh, well. Yeah, well, I think we're, we'll roll with it. We'll make it work, how about that?
We didn't have anything to work from because we had no, you know, new future project for twenty twenty-four, but.
If he calls you by one o'clock or something, let us know.
Okay, I'll do it.
No.
He hardly looked, was able to look up here.
Perfect.
We're still scrambling here on some numbers that.
If I, yeah, well, we'll just roll with it, make it work. I think that's no problem. Um, do you guys have any issue like? And I guess I was gonna ask Brandon if.
Move this project together and then we'll go up with Brandon. As far as that goes, um, let's, let's take Brandon up there and look and see. The challenges we got. It's really rocky, so Bennett's pretty steep getting up there as well, so, um, but we've gotta have something that.
So you hauled us up on that re- on that wreck.
Yep, that's right.
And where is this?
So I think we come from, from, so this would be up Swan Creek Canyon and we on that wreck. We started from the Bear Lake West subdivision and come in that illegal road, the, yep, yep. And that was the other thing they were proposing was, uh, some sort of a, this is long term, this is the division proposing some sort of a way. To prevent that access, like a pipe type, like a pipe well, uh, water, well, well. What's the word I'm looking for? Drill pipe type fence that would be durable, that they could put along there and try to prevent that. Those problems and they've, they've been kicking a bunch of ideas around, so.
So, that's the way you guys come in, wasn't that how that?
That person did. That's why, and I think that's why we ended up going that way, yep.
We were wondering if we were.
Yes.
What line their state was on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, cause there's private line up there and there's, you know, and then there's.
But we kind of went up and then we went off to the.
Yep, and they were up that, so they were up a road that technically wasn't supposed to be open, that had been open, you know, but. And I think a lot of their problem is, you know, UTVs, as you guys all know, has gotten way more popular. And so all these people are looking for a place to ride and, you know, coming from Bear Lake West, they're like, oh, just ride up here and. They go up and it's starting new roads and they all this, it's, it's, it's a, it's an ordeal, so.
Well, and from that, from that point of view, when they're coming from that side law enforcement.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard, you know, we've gotta stop them from coming out of that subdivision.
Yes.
Cause it's not a, a route anyway.
No, yeah, it's not supposed, yes, yeah. Well, thank you guys.
Hey.
And I will be back. I'll let you know on that CWPP plan. We'll get all that handled for you and make sure everything's good. And if you guys do have any fuel mitigation projects you'd like to see done or put emphasis. I know one place I did wanna mention Sweetwater Hill. I'm gonna try to do, um, get involved a little bit more with their homeowners association.
I'm wondering if we could go on the west side along there. I'm wondering if, um, the landowner would let us do. Like we did, um, all across, you know, the west side of Garden City. If, if we could go at least on the west side of, of the, I mean, the problem is the lots go right up.
Yep, to the, about the dredge top, yep.
Yeah, and they go right up to the private property, but you know, um. I'm wondering if, if that landowner would be amenable to, uh. Let us put a, 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 a fire break in there on his property and do just like we did on that, that's just. Well, it's three hundred west, but we went straight across there and then we planted it and it's good vegetation.
No, for sure.
And, but it's fire, you know, it's more, but it's, it's an asset to him as, for vegetation purposes as well as it's an asset to. Give us a fire break, you know, either direction, really.
Well, and that would be ideal is to tie like that one, you know, to come up maybe the edge of Hodges Canyon. Something and then come back around on the backside, that would be like.
We drop off there. That's the thing, you drop right off and into Hodges Canyon.
Yep, yeah.
And, uh, you know, and we've, they've done some mitigation in Hodges Canyon, a lot of that dead fall there, but. We need to tie that in there, you know, so that, if we've got isolated areas where the fire break can only go so far. Even with wind and everything else, then we've got an opportunity to, to mitigate homes and everything else, but.
If you had a big old hot fire, that'd look like California now.
Oh, yeah, that's like my biggest fear. I mean, it's, yep.
We had a lightning strike start up in Bridgeland. It would just come right down through and, you know, it would come right to three hundred west.
It'd be horrible.
So, yeah, we're gonna keep working on that and I do know it does sound like funding is going to continue to increase on these mitigation things. I'm gonna try to get, stay right in on it and make sure we're trying to get what we can, yeah.
I know, I know there's quite a bit of federal funding that's gonna be coming through and it'll come through to the states. For mitigation projects. It will be federal dollars, but the states will be the ones that are doing the mitigation, so. Um, I, yeah, I know that that was on that, on that wildfire commission, that was one of the, the. Uh, key points that they talked about with mitigation projects and that they needed to be funded, but let the. You know, whether it was a local fire department or whether it was the state or whatever, you know, a district or a multi. County type thing, um, make it available to, you know, cause it does, fire knows, does know state lines. It does know county lines, it does not know, you know, uh, you know, that kind of stuff. So I know there's some money coming down the pipe. We'll see how that is, but let's stay at the table and get as much as fast as we can.
And I'll try to stay on that as best I can.
We've had, that, you know, that will we deal with it, is a mess.
Yep, it is. And it's like my biggest concern, like, you know, so, yeah, keep on it, so, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Roger. You must have a knee like me, Roger.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing?
Good to see you. You've been here a few times.
Hi, Roger. Tell us for the record here who you are and what's your?
Roger Early. Lake Town, Utah resident. Farm owner. Um, what I, my concern is I talked with. Uh, tax a deal, I've been charged for non-resident taxes and. I, not a non-resident. And probably where it got filed up is through the mail. Cause when we would go down there, we would have it forwarded and we quit doing that, cause it got smashed up. Sometimes we'd get stuff from here and same way down there, wouldn't get it. So we started having it boxed and sent down, so it'd keep it straight. But our son goes to school here, so we're here all winter. And the raspberries and the farm keeps it here all summer.
Yeah.
But, uh, we spend more time here and we filled out a paper. About two years ago or so, then we would say.
Been a few years ago, but then he had a mailing address changed that changed it to an Arizona mailing address. So then I put him on a secondary because I assumed he was just down there more than he was here. And so he's filled out the primary residence signed statement for this year, but it was after a BOE had already met and stuff. So I told him we had to come to commission meeting to do that change for this year.
Like a year ago, I guess they sent it down then too and I didn't get them and I had to end up paying the late fee on them. And then school would start shortly down there that. What, either me or Shelby'd go down in the fall to get him, then they'd have to come back and want to stay here to. What either me or Shelby'd go down in the fall to get him, then they'd have to come back and wanted to stay here to take care of the berries and whatever. Then come back early in the spring, so. Anyway, we.
So your request is, is to give you the primary exemption for this tax year for twenty twenty three?
I don't know how many years, I just noticed it this year, how many years I've been paying?
I don't know, I'll have to look back and look for twenty two. Cause like I said, it triggered it because of a mailing address that went to Arizona, and that's what triggered it.
Cause I'd say they'd go down and they wouldn't forward it and. And uh, we ended up just having it boxed up here and sent down on the mail, taking them important stuff out. So, and then like two years ago, where they had that COVID deal and we didn't go down until real late that year. And uh, then we'd like to say, he's been going to high school up here now for the last two years.
So I can, I can look back and see if it's been one or two years and then I can figure.
Let's do that.
What it would be, cause I'm sure he's paid, you paid your taxes last year, right?
Yeah, I had to pay late fees last year, cause I didn't get the.
So I can, and I can bring it back to you this afternoon if you want.
Let's do that, and we'll get it straightened out. That work, we'll fix it for you, but we wanna make sure if we can, we can go back, far, far as we need to.
Okay, yeah, we spent a lot more time, I don't know, it'd be nice to be down there now for months or two. Especially last year, holy cow.
So for sure, we, we, I think we're, we're ready to do it for this year, but if we can go back, cause you filled out the paper for this year.
Yeah.
We're, we're able to do it, but we'll investigate a little bit.
Yeah, and I wasn't aware that he was here the full time, because like I said, that mailing address is a big trigger for us because of. We have eighty percent of our residents are secondary.
It's a good trigger, I mean, just keep arguing.
You know, they, they just love the stuff we didn't get vice versa, so we just quit doing it, cause.
Yeah.
Part of the. Stuff to come part wouldn't, and then like our taxes, we had the same thing happen when we was down there, we did stuff that we wouldn't get from here, important.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
If you, uh, yeah, we'll uh, do it for this year and then we'll have her look in, see how long you've been doing that and.
Okay.
See if we can get it straightened out. Okay, thanks, Kim.
Will you be able to have it, well, not anymore. I was gonna say, would you be, no, would you know by then?
Not if I'm in here though.
Yeah.
Thanks Roger.
That's what I say, hey.
So. Brian is not gonna be here.
Yeah, let me redo what he said, um, Kim, actually, do you have, we don't have property information for Mr. Noel, do we, Candy?
Uh, I would have it in my office, I can bring it back in in a little bit, but I don't, I don't want it.
You guys Casey, or no Johnny?
Yeah, Johnny please.
Should we skip on down to them sensor here?
Can we do that?
Yeah, let's do that sensor here.
Back, cause we're, we're.
Come on up.
If that works for you guys.
Yeah, we're fine there, we don't have, yeah.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Good, nice to meet you, how's it going?
Good. So Johnny wasn't able to show up, I'm his brother, this is my dad Armando Frias.
Okay.
So sorry, what were your names?
So Giovanni Frias and Armando Frias, I am his son.
Frias.
Yes.
I didn't know how to pronounce that.
Frias, in Spanish, it's a cold Frias, if you translate it to English.
Mucho frío, first name?
Giovanni, so G I O.
Okay.
V A N N I.
Okay, and then your name, sir?
Armando.
Can you spell that, please, so for the minute?
A R M A N D O.
Okay. Frias, F R I A S?
Yes.
But Giovanni's Italian, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what everyone says. Yeah.
Okay, what you got going?
So he's got, so I'm basically here helping out with translating also, so he bought a property up in Bear Lake, Garden City. Um, and he's got his receipt here with tax information, what he was charging taxes. So, um.
And I can maybe help with this too, because they were charged for a home on their property last year and this year that wasn't built yet. And so I've gone back and figured a refund for them for, and I'll let you guys look at that and see if that looks correct. Because I had the house on at two hundred seventy, which would have been half the value, but it wasn't built. So this year we took it off and got that down, it was just the foundation was all that was there. And then I, I figured the refund for twenty twenty two because they did pay their taxes in twenty two. And so that's what they would be refunded, does that look correct to you guys? So the house would be taken off completely?
No, yeah, so right now, it's just, yeah.
Cause right now it's just a foundation.
Yeah, right now it has some logs on it, but it's not fully built, yeah.
Yeah, it was a foundation, so we fixed it for twenty three, but we didn't fix it for twenty two, is that correct?
Yes, yes. This is a correcto, that's what I mean, the refund, yeah, it looks correct.
Okay, so that's, that's what the problem is, so.
And that's what you're saying we need.
To refund back, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we issue a refund to Johnny Frias for four.
No, to Armando and Anna.
To Armando, uh, for the amount of one thousand four hundred forty dollars and seventy cents.
Hey, second.
Moving second that we refund Armando the fourteen forty and seventy cents, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, got her.
And then how's that?
So, yeah, what I'll do is I will get Regina copy, and maybe she, I don't know if she can do it today. But while you're here, let me see if I can get her to do a refund for you today, would that be okay?
You don't want it today, or is today okay?
Okay, let me, let me do that and then I'll be back in to discuss the other stuff, if you're good with that.
Yup.
That's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Things slowed down a little in Garden City? Really? Still a lot of people coming on the weekends.
There is.
Family?
I guess.
I did get that budget or those numbers.
Oh yeah.
So, it was in, it was sixty nine thousand one hundred and thirty is what he submitted, he thought. And I think last year's was sixty seven thousand one hundred ninety two. So it was up?
Two thousand?
Yeah, almost, a little under.
Okay.
He said, he's like, oh, I thought I sent it to him, but.
Okay, so, um, and he may have, I may have just missed it, so.
Sixty nine thousand one hundred and thirty.
Okay, and I'll, I'll look and see, it's like, I, boy, I just don't see anything from him.
Okay.
Um, we'll plug that in, but we'll need a breakdown, so that when we do the budget breakout, we'll know what.
I'll make sure he emails that, yeah, that you get that, okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, it's Bill, right there right now.
Yeah, okay, so we just made an adjustment.
Okay, that's okay.
So what, what are we doing on the, is Kim taking care of Mr. Noel?
So I thought she was gonna come back, I can represent, I can represent Mr. Noel and Mr. Lyle right now, unless you want Kim here for that, I think we do probably do.
We probably do.
Cause I don't have much other than just an email that we've sent.
Go on to Mitch.
Mitch?
Somebody shot up with me.
Okay, perfect.
How about that?
Uptown, huh?
I, I'd say.
Sometimes there's people that don't know who we are, so it's easier on them.
That's really cool though, who did that? Who came up with that idea?
I ordered them.
Really?
Yeah, but mostly cause people kept asking me what my name was.
Commissioner, sometimes you're alright.
Okay, Mitch Poulson, I'm the uh, planning administrator for the county.
Uh, Sean Mallon Bear River Association of Governments Economic Development and or Government Affairs. And we're gonna tag team the one item, but I'll, I'll let Mitch speak to the short term rental fire fee first.
Right, so short term rental fire fee, um, our, our total fees this year, we had seventy nine uh, short term rentals, either renewed or new applications. Uh, which means that we'll be uh, paying the fire uh, marshal. Um, yeah, seventy nine times the fifty dollar fee for his inspections. Um, I did talk to him and make sure that, that number looked okay to him, he said that seemed reasonable and seemed about right, he'll do some checking to verify and make sure. Uh, he also indicated that their fees are likely going up to seventy five or a hundred dollars per inspection. And they're going to be reviewing that, um, with their board at their upcoming meeting, I think he said it's on the twenty first. Uh, so just be advised, you may wanna start considering raising your own uh, application fees as well, your call.
So what was it?
It was fifty, it's fifty dollars per inspection.
Need to move it to seventy five.
Or a hundred.
They, they need my money, or?
Didn't ask that.
Okay.
And this is the Garden City Fire District Chief?
Yup.
Can you really ask that question?
I know the answer.
So anyway, that's just, uh, just wanted to report that and let you know that Ann Lisa needs to uh, submit a payment to them for. Uh, for seventy nine inspections, a payment feedback to them for seventy nine inspections. Got, got that Ann Lisa?
No, so what kind of documentation do I need on that?
I don't know.
Like, like how do I, how do I make a payment for that?
Does he, don't he send some?
What, where, why, how, how much?
Yeah, I just sent it to uh, Mike Wahlberg, don't know his address.
Well, Garden City, Garden City Fire Department should submit us an invoice for the seventy, I mean, that's, we've gotta have a paper trail.
That makes sense, I'll, I'll follow up with that.
Just have them generate an invoice.
I just didn't, I just didn't think we'd done anything in the past, so.
We maybe not, but we.
It's time to, time to do it.
Ideally, it would have the dates he actually did the inspections, that's probably gonna be. A step too far, but maybe next year, we can invoice.
And is it gonna be for twenty twenty four or twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three, so these are the ones that have been completed, these, and these are only the ones that uh, that are completed, for example, we get, you know. People start renewing and submitting applications in November and December. But because planning and zoning doesn't meet in November and December, I just hold all those off till the front of the, for the, till the first of the year. So they'll be included in the twenty twenty four uh, calculation.
So and, how do we get reimbursed for that?
For the fifty dollars?
When, when they, when they.
Who, who gives them the bill, does Mike give them a bill and they send us a check?
No, when they renew their license, they pay.
The people getting short term rental license pay us their fee.
And that fee is wrapped into our fee that we charge.
Okay.
That's why he said, you know, we wanna raise our fee, that was why he was worried about raising our fee.
No doubt.
How much is your fee?
Fifty. Two, uh, two hundred, I think, short term, two fifty?
We just went to twelve hundred.
Yeah.
A new application's two fifty, a renewal's one fifty.
And ours are gonna be based on the time that they get their permit, that's the renewal date instead of the first of the year.
I like that.
Fire department is, you get five, six hundred short term rentals if they got to inspect all in one chunk, it's not getting done. So when a person puts in a permit, their anniversary day will be that time that they put in the first time, so it spreads it out.
You guys used to be year to year though, right?
We did, it was a new software program, it makes it easier to, to just do it.
And, and that makes sense, when you got a mountain of them to do, there's no way you guys can keep up with that.
Which program do you use, man?
What's that?
Which program do you use? Okay.
So, uh, moving on to uh, the Economic Development Board, Advisory Board. Uh, we have a couple of positions that have come up, two board members have requested to be uh, released from their assignment, that was Scott Huskinson and Mark Smoot. Um, we followed the same pattern that we had in the past and, and got, um. I conversed with uh, Mike about representatives from the Garden City area. Uh, and he recommended, um, Jordan Perry and Cam Jarman to fill those two spots.
Before we go to a vote, Commissioners, if I might, just uh, reference a couple of things, just as we have a broader discussion, since really we need to constitute the whole board. I appreciate uh, Mayor and, and Mitch on their help for those couple of positions. Um, I sent an email, you might recall a couple of months ago, true to my form, it was a little lengthy. I wanted to make sure that you had a lot of information that uh, you could feel.
Still working on reading it, actually, that's fair, if this were a town, I'd find a really good gif, that's fair.
But I wanted to make sure that you had all the information you needed, in particular because if you remember. That email in October, I was acknowledging I wouldn't be able to make uh, the meeting in November.
Uh, I remember that part.
So, to that end, I will say what I'm saying now for the next few minutes, cause I know you've read the, the email, maybe a sentence or two you haven't got to. But really for the audio record, um, and those that, that follow along uh, online with your meetings, but. So, being your representative through GOYO for the rural county grant. Uh, the rural county grant program at the state level requires. The counties participating in this, and Rich is of course considered rural, so you guys do. You must have and constitute and utilize. The CEO Advisory Board or CEO Board for short, that they've named it, the County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board. Uh, one of the questions you'd asked last time, we talked about the subject in an open meeting, uh, Chairman, was. If you have to do it, it is that they, they say, no, they are advisory. Uh, you should, you know, of course, like any advisory board, tourism tax advisory board or others that you use. Um, you know, let them ferret out, you know, work with your direction, so that basically their, their suggestions or advice comes back. And isn't in alignment with what you're typically thinking, but that board has to have at least five members. And those five members that you've had, uh, and that we represented in this last. Application period for fiscal year twenty four, but the feedback coming back from them, as well as our own acknowledgement, was that we did need to have a couple of updates. They then said, you really need to get that done before the calendar year, I understand that the contract has been sent over and been signed. So in good faith, they wanted to make sure that the paperwork got rolling, but I've assured them that we would meet their. Um, fair request that we would have this done by the end of the year. Those members have been, and uh, Mitch of course just touched on a couple of those. Sim Chairman as the county representative, municipality representative has been Mark Smoot. Scott Hus- Huskisson, um, was representing the private sector representative. There's a member of the public, Nikki Weston, Eric.
Wamsley.
Wamsley, thank you very much. Uh, another private sector representative, and then Sherry Stevens uh, was the workforce development representative. Um, they all show or have reflected a term ending in twenty four. Um, so now with that having been said, I'm just gonna refer to a couple of elements in that email, just to kinda go over what you should be considering. As to be representatives uh, to reconstitute the board. You must have at least five, but there's plenty of examples of where there's more, including within the Bragg area. And that's not an encouragement, it's just to let you know what you have as an option. But there are these following that are required, one must represent a, a county, but live within the county. One representing the municipalities within that county, one representing workforce development, and one that is a member of the public. Uh, so out of the five, you know, you've got an open spot there. I will say that, um, I, I would encourage someone like Mitch that serves in that capacity to maybe be a consideration for you. At the very least, it would be my recommendation that he and I be ex officio members. Um, and at least one, I'm a voting member, and another, I'm not, and so is that county's grant writer. Uh, though I take care of this grant, that county, because I work for Bragg, is just kinda my check and balance, and that individual and I are ex officio. And I'm basically their executive secretary, making sure the minutes are reported, kept, stuff like that. Um, so just again, for your, your contemplation. Another has nine members, actually a couple of them have nine members, not within Bragg, just a couple that I'm very familiar with. Um, one county tourism is a big deal to them, so they have one of their nine as a tourism professional. Um, most will have a chamber of commerce representative to represent. Um most will have a chamber of commerce representative to represent so kinda the private sector, just kind of it's an entirety, they have a pretty good pulse on the private sector market. Um another one has a a land developer or some sort of realtor kind of experience that can speak to where the market might be going and. You know, what kind of capital investments or horizontal infrastructure sometimes it gets called, is needed in order to spur manufacturing that that county is. I'm very passionate about wanting to see more of. Um and that the terms should be staggered, the terms are for four years, but the terms should be staggered so that at any given time. You have some institutional knowledge that keeps rolling, and of course, you guys would understand that as elected officials.
Question about that.
Yeah.
Uh four year terms, our uh our bylaws say that these are one year terms.
I noticed, but the state statute is four, they want some institutional knowledge.
Can we be more, oh okay, I got it.
They just want some of that institutional knowledge, again, for the reason that they stagger it.
Yeah.
Um however, that being said. I'm playing an attorney on TV when I offer it this way to Mitch's nuanced question, I think that the five ought to at least be four, but maybe you choose in excess of five. And those are one year because you want more people to have experience, or you want people to kinda turn and you you know, kinda keep that open, I I think you could stagger it. Of course, the complexity is up to your choosing and just having somebody that manages those terms for you and on your behalf and comes back as often as they need to.
And this is a good opportunity to do that, we are now staggered, if we've got the other two, the other ones that are up until two twenty twenty four, and we got two new ones that that um now have a four year term.
Yeah.
We just accidentally built that into our program.
I I I will say, as careful as I'm trying to craft this admonishment, that we reconstitute the whole board, so even if there's some that you want to continue on. I I would suggest that you, whatever the determination is, just say all the members and what their terms are that you think they should be. And we'll we'll consider the board fully reconstituted. Uh okay, coming back to to that element, um I had provided some examples of workforce development everywhere from Troy Lamb, who is Sherry Stevens' replacement. With Department of Workforce Services, she, of course, is now one of the people that I report to on your behalf at GOYO, so she can't serve. Um and of course, doesn't represent Department of Workforce Services anymore. But uh Troy Lamb has expressed interest because he'd like to know more about Rich County, but so too has Bridgerland Technical Colleges. Entrepreneur and Innovation Center uh Director Mark Alexander, he has expressed, cause I've just openly on your behalf. Somewhat generally a non-obligate, a non-obligatory, I've asked some folks if they would be, you know, interested since they serve at least in one of those other counties. So um there there's plenty of great choices, and of course, you know more than I do, Mitch, of course, has already mentioned a couple of those that have been talked about. Um at this point, I think I'd like to pause and just see if you have any other follow up questions.
So are you are you thinking that the board ought to be bigger than five?
I I think that where I would go so far as to step into the question is, I would suggest it to be composed of people that might be able to double dip. Maybe you have elected officials that are also private business owners. Maybe there are also private business owners that are in industries you think are 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 important now, your current tax base, cause again, this is about economic development. And maybe also a mix of those that you'd like to be as the county continues to grow. Making sure that you're you're cognizant of the opinions expressed by those that represent current industry that's very important to the county. That's currently paying for your school district, currently paying your budget, currently paying for the niceties that the public expects you to provide them, as well as those that. That you expect it will become naturally, whether you like it or not, or those that you purposefully want folks like Mitch and I working on your behalf to. Ensure we develop for you and other elected officials. So if you think that you can do that within five, you know, five is the minimum, so.
What I'm wondering about, if are we are we gonna try and move away from? People applying um like we've done in the past for. You know.
Direct to business grants, moving to more big projects.
Yeah, I mean, is that is that?
I can answer this by saying what I've been told, cause cause my opinion is, I'm here to serve your own pleasure, and I I see pros to that. Okay, so I I can see some pro- proponent, you know, beneficial use to that. I will tell you that GOYO has indicated a couple of things, one, they would love for my position to be decreasingly funded by only the grant. And counties picking up more of that through their general fund allocation. That is something that they have clearly stated to me, they'd like counties to wean off of it, in other words, they feel, particularly with Cash County. Cause that's how Cash has paid for my position for now th- fully three years, this last one, like you guys, partly through the rural county grant. If you've seen that it's working, then fund it like it would be, right? And they put it to get to your question, they'd like to see the majority of the money put towards projects. I think it could be safely said that direct to businesses could be projects, but they've made it very clear too, this coming year, they expect there to be more regulation. Around my reporting mechanism, so I I owe you and we need to have this board, because this CEO board should be used more often, just one or twice a year. That's not a criticism towards Rich, apparently that seems to be a fairly universal criticism across all rural counties. They wanna see it used more regularly, either every other month or quarterly at least, to kind of see where the funds are going. And have them more actively aware of the progress of the funds throughout the year and the process and how they're used.
And it's it's up to this board of what direction, whether we wanna fund a bunch of smaller ones or a big one.
Cr- correct, yep, that's up to you.
Yeah.
They would like to see regional, uh something less specific when possible, they would like to see a multi-year effect. And they would like to have bre- better metrics, and so part of those regulations they're expecting to come from the reporting. This year in twenty four is that they will mandate that there be more metrics as to, what was the ROI, what was the return on investment? For the tax dollars invested through GOYO from the legislature, through the counties and whether through Bragg or a commissioner otherwise. What did you what did you get produced, how many full-time jobs were there, or how many part-time jobs? Can you, even as an estimate, quantify how many increased sales tax dollars were collected, what kind of capital expense was made, like? Other counties have put a lot of this money into horizontal infrastructure, water sewer, whatever else, right, like they want a business park to be built. And so the read I've gotten from them, sometimes they're very direct with me and other times they're very gray. And I can tell they're trying to be tender to the fact that they're, you know, rural counties are not all the same, and rural counties have different desires on where to deploy these dollars. But they wanna be able to report back to the legislature because that's where they take our annual reports, and they tell those proponents of this bill, this is how it's being used. And I think much like your position, budgets vary depending on on the economy and inflation and everything else, and if this is ever gonna be a risk. They need to show that this is either working and producing good results or it isn't. And so if you feel like the direct to business grants are the place where folks like Mitch and I can produce really great metrics and report conclusively. This isn't just the money that was spent, but here are the new jobs that were created, or here was the new equipment that was purchased, or a building that was partly renovated or upgraded. And we've added so many square feet, we kind of get to be, for the time being, the deciders of what those metrics are, but they want quantitative mes- metrics, they don't want the qualitative that. Golly gee, it's really worked to keep some people, you know, employed, that narrative will work for a minute, but they're saying that minute has kind of come and gone.
They want numbers for the people that we're allocating money to.
Right.
Right, so if they're asking for a new french fry machine, how is that going to impact the number of customers that they're able to serve in a given year?
And the sales.
Yeah.
Which is challenging for direct to business, I'm not saying it's insurmountable, I'm just saying it's challenging.
Yep.
It is.
They have to then provide us numbers that they probably feel guarded, maybe insecure, maybe it's proprietary because somebody else sells fries. But they're gonna have to start determining, and and I've I've seen this in a lot of grant programs, as Mitch probably has over the years. The more detailed that question is, the smaller guys, the more intimidated they are by it to participate, and the more they're like, eh, it's not worth the little bit of money I get. So that's a challenge that we would hope to be sensitive to, again, I I've assured them that I will con- uh work with you to reconstitute the board. That I will convene the meetings and that I'll make sure that they're happening, so you know, whatever that is. I get I get to be your bad guy from out of town, so you guys can continue to be good cop, whatever that needs to be, but it will also be done with tact to say. Th- this isn't the Rich County Commission demanding it so much as the state legislature grants these monies, they don't have to, it could be used towards public education, it could be to- towards roads or water projects. But they've chosen to do this through counties, but they're also making the rules, and these rules are saying we have to be a little bit more matter of fact about what those metrics are.
Yeah, I haven't minded, I've, in fact, I I've been a proponent to be smaller and spreading it out more. And Mike would know that uh, cause a lot of it went to businesses in Garden City. But uh to help those out, like you say, you know, just to, there wasn't a french fry machine, but there's been machines for the drive. Drive-ins and you see those long lines out on the street, anything we can do to help them businesses. Move them lines along is a plus.
When I call these people, let them know that they've been awarded, they gush, like like there is an immense amount of gratitude for the program.
Yeah, so that and I and I I support what we have done, you know, wholeheartedly. And I think I think. The other commissioners wanna change it up and maybe, and and I'm open to looking for bigger projects too, you know.
Well thankfully, the drawdown for this county that folks like Mitch and I take from administrative overhead is very low compared to, say, like Cash County. Who uses the majority of theirs towards departmental costs in the Bragg scenario, so I'm I'm more sensitive over there to that. But they've used it for for like this coming year, some of what's left will be used towards an airport feasibility study, meaning long term, what are the capital investments that they need to put in that? Could a commercial daily flight be added, could a twice weekly commercial flight be added, are their fees going to be appropriate for that? Some of it is a SWOT analysis done with a partnership with a a USU um business, it's a it's a rural development center where we're going to do a matrix study. Of several communities, it's gonna be a matching grant, so the communities have to come up with a little bit of money, and then the county through this program will match it. And it will assess through their graduate program, what is the community good at, and what does the community wanna be as it continues to grow? And so, you know, out of those quadrants, you may be good at something, but like a former community I used to work for, governor's office was really direct with that community and said. To its leaders, of which I may have been one at the time, well, you're good at that, but that actually gives us a black eye, and it's not an industry we wanna see grow in the state of Utah, and we're like, well, but we're really good at it. Taking it away overnight, like you're implying, would take away our tax revenue. Okay, so it's what you're good at, but also what you wanna be as you continue to grow, and ideally, you're gonna end up with some some scatter dots, you know, in in this fourth quadrant of things that you're. Your local economy is good at, your local skill and workforce base is good at, uh or could be fairly easily with low investment, and what you also wanna be. Right, cause it could be like that other former community, they were really good at something, but evidently, we weren't going to be successful at continuing to do that over time, so we had to shift, right? And that particular community thought of tourism in a big way. Um other things that that county is doing with some of their grant money is passing it along for a water match to help uh ranchers and farmers. Participate in the state water efficiency, the ag u- users w- water efficiency program. And you know, some smaller operations, they just don't have a lot of discretionary funds to be paying for some engineer to come, tell them how they could, you know, save water. Give the reports that are part of the grant application the next step to be able to get some of those bigger state grants to afford to upgrade their system. Um there's a travel specific, like um. We wanna attract more from a particular industry, so there's like a trade show booth kinda cost that's set aside and some printed materials as part of another county's grant money. So there's there's a lot of variety to what you can do, you guys already know as governing board members of Bragg's governing board, the ag report scenario. Well, we mimicked that largely from the six county application, right, so. Again, I say this mostly for the audio record and just to get, you know, get the hamster moving in its wheel in your mind as to just how flexible this can be. Um with what we put in for the budget for this fiscal year twenty four, a hundred and sixty-five was noted as going towards the direct to business grant program. Doesn't mean it couldn't be modified if you see differently, but that is what we put towards the year.
Have you got lots of applications already, Mitch?
Fewer than normal, uh but the ask is also larger, so that's kind of an interesting uh change in the direction. Now, we still have about two weeks before the application period closes, so that could change, but at this point, I you know, I reviewed the applications last night and uh that was kinda the gist that I had come up with.
So it sounds like this year, we probably wanna keep it the same and then consti- reconstitute the board, as you suggested. Keep it the same and then really decide a- as that CEO board in twenty twenty four, what we wanna do in twenty twenty five with the money.
And that's certainly a discussion that we uh we typically have at some point during the year, do we want to continue on this pathway, do we want to. Uh maybe go a different route and do low income housing or internet upgrades or you know, something to that effect, so that's always, that's certainly a discussion.
And I would then write coattails on that discussion to say that. Again, I offer myself up with a whatever length of the chain you wanna give me, but kinda acting, knowing what GOYO is saying is their pit bull. Where you guys can still be good cop, to be able to start communicating that, hey, i- it may be that this program is gonna start tightening up, you're gonna have to start offering. Some solid metrics, cause somebody's gonna have to deliver that message, right, so even if you expect that you would be doing the direct to business grants. That message has to be made clear, cause even if you're accepting applications this year, I think to, cause remember, I'm getting this feedback now. But it will be September, October, when I have to have that report in, by then, it'll seem old hat to the GOYO folks that are telling me this now today.
Yeah.
But if we, you know, we should, what I'm getting at is, we should communicate this to the applicants now, that they need to, they need to produce, if they're gonna take this year's money. They have to produce some metrics for us, and if we sign NDAs and the other, you know, CEO board members sign non-disclosure agreements with us. That we will treat this information as proprietary, you know, we don't need to be telling the world in an open format like this, what some of those competitive metrics are, we can understand that, GOYO will understand that. But they are definitely asking for some of those those metrics.
Which they should with tax money.
Yeah, that's kinda their view, yeah.
And it's common with almost any grant that I've ever worked with, it starts out very loose, and then every year, the strings tighten up a little bit, and more is required and.
Well, stagnant systems get gamed pretty quick.
But they do, yep.
An ED, yeah, ED, yeah, anyway, yeah, there it this is pretty typical for grant programs, so. Anyway, kinda back to where I think the the biggest issue that, at least for the agenda item we were speaking to, is needing to reconstitute that board, so not to put any pressure on you, but. I don't have pressure on you.
Yeah, this Jordan came and talked to. They're willing to do it.
Is there matching dollars with these grants, do the businesses have to match up so much?
Uh so the CEO Advisory Board and the commission could determine that they could use these monies either just as a flat grant, or that they could be a matching grant. For example, that SWOT analysis that we're gonna do through the Rural Development Center with USU. W- the the look right now, cause it's just conversational at this moment, cause they are in a similar situation to you, you know, they've just approved it and we're moving through some of these details by using the CEO board. Is gonna probably be a one-to-one match, so if a community wants that SWOT analysis done, and what they're good at and what they wanna be, and then. That guides them on corporate recruitment practices or corporate retention practices after that's been done, they're saying, hey, the county has this money through the state. But you have to put something in into it as well, you could do the same thing with businesses if you'd like. Um but I will also say that to your question, like in the Cash County example of the airport feasibility study, I applied for an EDC Utah grant. Uh this this county is not a member of Economic Development Corporation of Utah, I'd be happy to discuss that with you if you want it to be, the other two counties that I represent, they are. And so I applied for grants on behalf of those two counties, they were smaller in number, one uh that I'm specifically speaking to, we got back a forty-five hundred dollar matching grant. I was able to use the GOYO money we're talking about as the county's match for the forty-five hundred from another entity, so you you can be creative about it. Um you know, if you guys have a CRA or an RDA one day, uh you could utilize that money and not, you know, have it come from general fund, but still be outside this. Kind of operation, you could always get corporate grants, and those could be ma- or corporate sponsors, and those could be matches.
Makes the dollars go further, plus it gives a little bit of skin in the game for those that are actually getting the grants.
In the past, when our in our, when our board has met and the applicant has. Referenced that they're gonna put so much and they want, but they want this much to add on and that, that goes a long ways.
Yeah, when we when we get the money, we request that they, you know, provide some kind of matching component to it, some match, some match a lot, some match a little. But most of the time, the grant monies that we give out is a small portion of what's actually being matched.
Yeah.
Like we'll have four million dollars for the projects, and we've divvied out, you know, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the funds, so.
Yeah. So it sounds like uh kinda calling previous question, uh cause I'm respectful of your time and and so it sounds like you've got two, and. And so, it sounds like you've got two, and what are their representations? Their municipal recommendations, right?
Yeah, one, one is from represented from a municipality in the county and the other one is a private sector representative.
Okay, so you've got two of those four requirements.
Yep.
Next month?
Yeah, we made sure that uh we made that request, they met those.
Have you talked to Eric?
No, I have, I have not.
I wanted to talk to him, see if he wanted to continue on.
I can do that for you.
See if he wants to, he's called that, okay.
Uh any thoughts as to who, a- again, i- if it's conversational only and we ratify this next month, though, though. I've got a lot of pressure to stay, um, is there a county rep that you would see?
Right, right now, it's Sam, yeah. Um, uh what about Sherry Stevens, who's our workforce development?
So Troy Lamb and or uh Mark Alexander are willing.
They automatically swap out?
No.
We have to.
Troy is Sherry's replacement at DWS, but that does not automatically fill her spot here. You just have to have somebody that works on workforce development, right, DWS is all about trying to upskill people, get them rehired. Bridgerland Technical College is about those professional certifications, upskilling your workforce.
I figured we'd just use whoever replaced her, cause she was on it last year.
Okay, that that would be Troy.
Whatever you wanna do.
That would be Troy. And Troy's already expressed a willingness. Again, a chamber of commerce can be a private sector folk as well.
So are we gonna have a problem if we don't do this until January sixth?
I will be quick to communicate it and I would just say there was a lot of discussion and it was good discussion, but.
I think we get it now.
I would love to tell them if you feel like I can not to put you in a corner and pressure you here, but. They will have a decision in January, we'll go a lot further than, oh, sorry, we didn't begin, just let me know.
Can we, let's do these two and then uh.
For your terms?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that bill?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we appoint um Cam Jarman and Jordan Perry. To the economic uh development board.
Okay.
For a four-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's moved and the motion is Jordan Perry and Cam Jarman serve on the economic development board for four years, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
How do you spell Jarman?
J A R M A N.
The CEO board, right?
CEO advisor, you know, whatever.
Cam.
K A M.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, with that, I I respect that there's two weeks left to this, in a communication previously with Mitch. I understand that normally the, the waiting and ranking would move fairly briskly after the closing of the application period. But as long as he knows that if next month is gonna be when it'll be constituted, cause it needs to go through them, right? So if folks or applicants, they need to respect that this will have to be really fully constituted. And then I'll be very quick to ask them to get together and see what their availability is for the very first meeting. Before we could then take these applications and and so forth.
If uh, if that other one individual's willing, want, wants and willing to serve it, where it's a done deal. We won't have, i- it's reconstituted now.
Okay, so to make sure I understand, there's the two you just mentioned, you, Mr. Chairman, would stay on as the county representative. One of the other two was a city representative and a private sector representative. Um Troy Lamb could be your workforce representative, so I'm missing a fifth. Could be Mitch, no, I've got him already counted.
No, Eric, uh it, there Eric's currently serving.
And and Nikki Weston.
And Nikki Weston, I'm sure she'll.
Okay, so that's six, would you like to make it an odd number to break a vote? Just if there's ever a tie, you don't have to, there's no requirement for an odd number, I'm just.
Do either of you wanna be voting members?
No.
Oh, I was gonna recommend Mitch, so I guess there's that. I'm happy to be their secretary, like that sort of role, but. I think where you pass along some, oh, you know what, I guess that could apply to you too, this was the thinking for me not being one. Uh while I respect that I have that opportunity in one of the counties I represent, I do think that. It can be a little bit challenging, they're they're my check and balance, right, because some of the money flows through to pay for my position. I of course recuse myself during those conversations, but I just think if I don't have to.
I think we're gonna, I think we'll be okay.
And I just say no because I'm the one that ends up taking the minutes and part of our application is that they submit. Uh profit and loss information, which we have indicated will not be transferred to the board, but it will only end up at the administrative level. That would give me an unfair advantage over the rest of the board.
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to think about it a little bit longer than just this meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got my clear direction, I'll communicate that back to Goio, I feel like Mitch does too, to at least tell those applicants that while I might close in a couple of weeks. The ranking and so forth won't happen until after the board's constituted.
Yeah, cause we'll wanna point Nikki and possibly Eric, Eric on a two-year term. To stagger.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter if there's three people, like it doesn't matter if the majority is the four-year term or the two-year term, it just as long as it's staggered and you can just roughly have.
That'll be, you know, that'll break the.
Then I can work with Annalisa and Mitch to get contact information for those, just to at least acquaint myself with and interviews and go from there, that'll work.
And the uh workforce service.
Troy, Johansson.
Troy, well.
Um.
Lamb.
Troy Lamb, I said Johansson, what did I forget? Oh, I'm thinking of somebody from my previous life, I just remembered, thank you Troy.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Troy Forrester, okay.
Hey, anything else?
Do you need anything else?
That'll move us forward, right, and then we'll have a discussion and make fun in January of. Of reappointing Nikki and and Eric or. Uh if Eric doesn't want to, then we'll give this an opportunity to come up with another individual, so.
And am I okay to set up a meeting for ranking and prioritization of the applicants early in January? Perfect, yeah, cause we're, it's really funny, we we really tried to get this uh moving smoothly so that the applicants have plenty of time to spend the money. And we always end up in December, January, regardless of how hard we try to get it closer to October, it just is what it is.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jerome.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Commissioners.
You're awesome, see you guys.
We ready for Cam?
Cam said she will not be into after lunch.
Okay.
And so we'll do Kim and then Brian and Mr. Noel and Mr. Lau with her when she's available again after lunch.
Yeah. So, does everybody, anybody read the minutes?
I did read them, I don't know if you guys got a chance. Just trying to think, there might have been something.
Um, I will start with, what's the first month?
September.
Yeah, September sixth, I make a motion to approve the September sixth minutes for Chris May.
Second. Moving second, the the minutes for the September sixth meeting be approved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the October fifth minutes.
Second.
Moving second, the October fifth mi- minutes be approved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And um.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Uh any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve the November first uh minutes, Commission, Rich County Commission meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's moving second that the Rich County Commission minutes for November first.
Yeah.
First be approved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, all of them. Can I have these to her?
We are alive, yes, we are so happy.
Happy to be alive?
Thank you.
You may start singing before you should have.
Ah, yeah.
Just for when you read them off.
Okay.
How much do I have to say on all of that, I don't have to repeat the whole thing, do I?
Do you need a copy?
For the motion?
We will, we will, we've gotta read it.
Right, but what do I do to?
Same thing.
Read it? Yeah, I'll need one. You guys in break?
Officially.
Well, yeah, kinda.
Do you wanna drink for lunch?
Sounds like we need to break for lunch, huh?
Well, I don't know, we needed to really get Kim behind us if we got.
Yeah, she said she couldn't be here till lunch.
I was just kidding, I just see what was happening. And it was lunchtime, so.
Minutes for that bills.
We were only taking a thirty minute break, we knew that, right?
We can do a bill, we can do the bills.
I thought you guys were taking off off to eat lunch.
We are.
Yeah.
We are.
Thank you.
Are they, are they open today?
Yeah.
Got a motion for expenditures?
I'll, I'll uh make a motion to approve the November expenditures.
Got a second?
A second.
Moving second that the November expenditures be approved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
I gotta run out of scales.
They already can't figure it out.
Mm-hmm, land on troubles.
Yeah.
I guarantee ya, if he don't know how to run it.
Didn't, you can't figure it out.
Well, we, when the county commissioner felt like it was because we were the bastard child. So we went into the apartment, we were always trying to make it on the south lines, or like Blue Lake, if you know where that is.
Not good for lunch, should.
Yeah.
We wanted them to do more, be more in charge of it than what they're, they're putting a board in back in our lap.
Well, in the meeting we had with them, that's the way it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
They're gonna come back in the next meeting.
Yeah, some chairman we had signed some contract that we'd be responsible for project and not gonna name who that is, but you know.
She said don't look at my sheet.
Okay, the budget will reflect, um. This, this proposed budget reflects an increase, um, in wages, um, to the employees.
How much? Can you tell me that please?
Two dollars an hour. It also, uh, reflects an increase in our health insurance across the board with that. It was about a fourteen percent increase, um, fourteen point eight percent increase in our health insurance.
Now, Kim, this raises our minimum wage to eighteen, so anybody who, the two dollars, wanna get them to eighteen, they'll get more. So like, you have. You have a couple people that are gonna get more than two dollars. That'll get up to eighteen. Everybody else will get two dollars.
So everybody else will get two dollars except for those that are below the eighteen dollars and they'll get a market adjustment up to eighteen. So everybody in, everybody in the county will be making at least eighteen dollars. And that will be the starting wage on new.
Employees.
Employees for this year. And, uh. It's too late to be making any adjustments on your budget there.
Is that special trails project? Is that for the trail thing down on the highway?
Yeah, and we, we budgeted in there and we're hoping that. Everything's gonna run through UDOT as far as paying the engineer and contractors and all that, but. At this point in time, they haven't completely agreed to that, so we went ahead and budgeted in as money in going out, so, um. We're prepared to take care of that if we need to, um, we prefer not to, but whatever it is, but that's what that is. And we should have specified that as theirs, maybe we did, I don't know. Yeah, special trails project, okay, so we did get the trail in there.
We wanted them to do more, be more in charge of it than what they're, they're putting a board in back in our lap.
Well, in the meeting we had with them, that's the way it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
They're gonna come back in the next meeting.
Yeah, some chairman we had signed some contract that we'd be responsible for project and not gonna name who that is, but you know.
It wasn't me. Chairman, said right on there, chairman. I just signed what you guys put in front of me. Does any of the public have anything to say? Any comments about this? Jonathan, anybody online?
There's some people online, but no comments.
Well, then based on no input from the public and no comments from online or questions online, no questions I guess, John?
No questions, no.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll second Bill's motion to close public hearing.
Okay, move and second that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mister Chairman, based on the public comments, the period that we, uh, entertained. And, uh, the input that we have, I would move that we approve, um, the twenty twenty four budget that we have presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is, uh, approve the twenty twenty four budget as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the following. Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt the following tax rates, uh is it twenty twenty four or twenty twenty three tax?
It's twenty.
Twenty four, sorry.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four tax rates, general operations tax rate of point zero 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 four seven nine, a multi-county assessing and collecting tax rate of point zero 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 one five and a local assessing and collecting tax of point zero 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 one nine six.
Okay, I'll second that mo- that motion.
Okay. Motion is to adopt the tax rate uh general operations at point zero 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 four seven nine, multi-county assessing and collecting at point zero 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 one five, local assessing and collecting point zero 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 one nine six, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would make a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty four health insurance plan with select health incre- insurance with an increase of fourteen point eight percent. Dental, vision and life will not increase, so my motion would be to accept the offer from um our health insurance of select health for four for fourteen point eight percent increase.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to use select health insurance fourteen point eight percent increase, dental vision and life will not increase, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
So um my motion was to accept the general operating budget, I will also make a motion to accept the following sanitation bu- the the sanitation budget for twenty twenty four of one million one hundred five thousand dollars for revenue and expenditures, expenditures.
I'll accept, uh I'll second that.
Okay, motion to adopt the following uh sanitation budget for two thousand twenty four, one million one hundred and five thousand for the revenue and expenditures, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the following increase wages for county employees for twenty twenty four, a wage increase cost of living of two dollars per hour will be given to part-time and full-time county employees with the possibility of market adjustment based on salary survey, I'll include in my motion that uh our minimum wage will be eighteen dollars uh and there'll be a market adjustment to bring those that wanna make eighteen dollars up to eighteen dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion of uh following wage increases for county employees uh cost of living for a two dollar per hour will be given to part-time and full-time employees and with the possibility of market adjustment to those lower to brought be brought up to eighteen dollars an hour, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that Rich County pays a hundred percent of the Utah re- retirement rates.
Second.
Motion, we have a motion to have Rich County pay a hundred percent of the Utah retirement rates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion have Rich County be billed count uh county sanitation services.
Second.
Okay, have a motion that have Rich County builds county sanitation services, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to reauthorize the quarter cent county option sales tax for twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Got a motion to reauthorize a quarter cent county option sales tax for two thousand twenty four, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion uh to loan up to four hundred fifty thousand dollars to the enterprise fund from the capital projects fund for twenty four months at at the PTIF interest rate.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to loan up to four hundred and fifty thousand to the enterprise fund from the capital projects fund for twenty four months at the PTIF interest rate, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we adopt the proposed budget as of December thirteenth twenty twenty three.
Second that.
Okay, motion to adopt the proposed two thousand twenty four budget as of twenty December thirteenth twenty twenty three, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um uh make a motion to authorize the clerk to make department line item adjustments.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to authorize the clerk to make department line item adjustments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, I I make a most.
Did you guys already approve the expenditures, you did, so the rest is good.
Did we approve the expenditures?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the expenditure been pre- pre-
Yep.
Approved for November twenty twenty three.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Thanks, I was just being extra helpful there.
Okay.
Kim?
Okay, Kim Wilson, Rich County Assessor. Okay, so Roger's refund would be the total down here, the seventeen seventeen fifteen.
Okay, so we'll need to did we already make a motion for his?
No.
It was fourteen, we did one, but it was fourteen, right?
Well, it was. No, that was the, that was the, that was the month, yes.
For a month other than.
We didn't have Roger's number.
No, you didn't have the refund number, so I went and figured it, so I and I told you I'd bring it back this afternoon.
Okay, um then from our previous uh agenda item, I'll make a motion that we refund Roger and Sylvia early, a total amount of seventeen seventeen and fifteen cents for uh being billed as a secondary home when it was a primary.
Second.
Alright, motion is to refund Roger and Sylvia early seventeen seventeen point fifteen uh to bring them back in line for sec- for us. What you gonna call it?
Primary resident.
Primary resi- primary resident, not secondary, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um. I also have.
Brian Noel.
Yeah, we didn't have any discussion on that, so I was trying, I didn't know what he had said, I was assuming he was coming. So him and Casey had said he wasn't, those were, what were they called on the agenda? Exception, tax appeal exception request?
So I can uh talk to you a little bit about this, they co- they contacted me um after the BOE uh deadline had passed, or not the BOE, but the uh tax appeal for the state deadline had passed, which was thirty days after the letter was mailed out. So they are requesting um both Mister Noel and Mister Lau are requesting exceptions to this, and I can read uh Mister Lau said um attached is a state appeal form for our three properties at Garden City. Since we didn't know the deadline of submission, we missed it. Please let us submit these forms for another chance of reevaluation. The dramatic tax jump costs our family um costs our family a big, a big burden. Please let me know if you have any questions. And he wasn't able to attend today because he is at a um he's in Chicago taking terri- ca- taking care of his daughter um so for some medical needs.
Okay, so did he clarify that he had filled out the forms for a tax appeal?
Yes, so he he.
So that appeal has to be filed with the state, has nothing to do with us whether they accept it or not, right?
No, no, we have a deadline of thirty days.
There's a deadline of thirty days once the le- the date up from the date on the letter and it states right on the letter, the thirty days, so he knew the deadline. He knew it was within thirty days, he had called and you know, we sent him to the clerk's office to get the 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 forms and everything that he needed, and so he had talked to her well before the deadline and he didn't submit them before the deadline.
But does he submit to us, or does he submit?
He submits them to us, then we have to fill out our portion and then it goes down, so he submits them with, not with me, but with with our clerk, with with and Lisa, so he said he's submitted them to her, but he submitted them late.
So we're just, we're requesting, he's requesting an exception to be able to still appeal.
Both him and Mister Noel.
And Mister Noel.
And Mister Noel, I don't have any information on him, I don't know if he filed any paperwork with you or not.
Um.
Cause as.
I think he didn't file, he was just hoping to get permission to still file.
But he he knew, I mean, he knew the deadline the same as everybody else, it goes out right on the letter.
When did they contact you, what was the date?
Um Mister Noel, I can't remember exactly who state it was, um I can tell you, he told me I can't remember which day he uh made an appointment, but it was sometime I don't know, I'd say two to three weeks ago.
And you guys made their final decisions on October sixth and that was the date or some or October fourth somewhere, I think the date on the letter was October sixth, so they had till November.
Yeah, the deadline, the deadline was on November, it was a Saturday, November fourth. So basically I gave him till November sixth to turn it in, but he's just requesting that he can still turn it in. So both of those are, that's their request.
What does the state do when you send them down late? Like if we.
We never sent any late. We haven't, I mean, if they miss the deadline, they miss the deadline. They know, you know, they know it's thirty days, um we usually talk to them and hear about it being thirty days from the date they get the notice, it's on the letter that they get, the decision letter. So. It's like I know, I mean it's, they've got to take some responsibility, my feeling is, you missed the deadline, sorry. You know, you can appeal again next year if you want to, but you've missed the deadline. I mean, I don't know about you and me, but if we miss the deadlines, a lot of times we're not getting a second chance to go back and redo. But that's 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 not my call, my recommendation would be no.
Well, on the on the letter that they were informed with, um I mean, there was a deadline on there, there's a deadline for a reason and I mean, if it was a day or two, that's one thing, but uh apparently we don't have specific dates of when they actually even contacted you, is that correct?
No, not from Mister Noel, I know he called, um but I have specific dates from Mister Lau.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, give it just a second. He spoke to me on um November twenty eighth uh at length on the phone and then I asked him to email his request to you guys, so I mean, that's the request was the email I read.
And the request or the appeal had to be filed by the fourth?
The fourth, yeah.
Okay.
And she actually gave him till the sixth, so they had plenty of time.
Um I think we deny their their exception request, I mean, the if we put the the deadlines are on there for a reason and if we're gonna accept their request, then we set a precedent to accept really any other requests and we don't have a deadline, there needs to be a hard stop on this and to move along and and uh I mean, they're they're right, every right they have is to appeal to the tax commission, but they've gotta do it in a timely manner, so. I my motion is to.
Is that your motion?
My mail, my motion is to deny that request for um the 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 uh appeals.
I agree, I second that motion.
Okay, got a motion to deny the uh appeals for the deadline, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you for doing the refund for the free assist or the free assists? For for Armando and his wife. Um I had another one and this was, I have a few mistakes and corrections that I that we found, they didn't bring them to a supportive equalization, but we found them during the tax, when the tax notices went out. Why they didn't contact us, I don't know, but like this Heather Porter, she's with Conestoga Ranch, all the other lot values are at seventy five thousand and for some reason this carried the original, they're point oh five of an acre. It carried the original thirteen acres of commercial real estate onto it. Cause what happens is once they split them out, it keeps the same original value until I go in and change them and I missed this one, and they just let me know, this they just called yesterday and I was out of the office yesterday. And so it should be at seventy five thousand and it's like six hundred and some thousand and they have not paid their taxes on it. Um so at this point in time, I don't know if you would allow me to make those changes, I mean, it's clerical, so I think I can fix the mistake. But at this late date, since we've turned it over to Lou Jean, I wanna run some pa- deadlines past her.
Okay, so explain that again.
Okay, so when they split parcels.
So how big is her, how big is her parcel?
Point oh five of an acre.
Okay.
The value is based on thirteen acres.
Okay, gotcha.
And so, and it carried through from the commercial real estate.
And we have other parcels that.
It parcel or lot number eighteen, lot number twenty on either side of it is at seventy five thousand.
And their values are seventy five, okay.
And this one's at six hundred and some thousand.
Okay, well, based on the fact that we made that mistake, I would make a motion that we make that adjustment and for her taxes.
So I need to.
Second.
Okay, motion to make the adjustment co- to correct that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I have, oops, sorry.
Do you have, sorry, do you have the parcel number on that one?
Yes, forty one seventeen two eight zero 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 one nine.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Then I have, I have a few that were corrected, um there was, they changed, let me start over. One parcel was a duplicate parcel, it was in there twice, so that's been corrected. Um there was one, another one that was on as secondary and I don't know how it got changed to secondary, it should've stayed primary cause their address, their mailing address did not change, and so I corrected hers. All West, since they turned the telecommunications companies over to the counties, I have to assess their buildings now. Well, they have the building in Rand- or Woodruff and they have the one here in Randolph and I had left them off, so I put them back on the fifty numbers, we're gonna in, I'm gonna work with Kaya to get them back into locally assessed numbers because that was a, that's been a nightmare. Um there was a couple other parcels that were uh one that should've been deleted and wasn't uh couple of years ago, and then there was another one that I don't know what happened, I think it was a typing error on his value. So I've corrected those cause it was our errors and I thought under that I could fix, I can correct those without bringing it through you guys, but I wanna know how you guys feel about that, should I bring everything that I change after I close my role through you guys?
Well, it's in those particular situations where there it's an error and it's a typing error uh those corrections, I think I think that's your responsibility to get those made.
Okay.
Um I don't know that you need to bring every one of them to us when it comes to a refund or or a an adjustment like this last one where um the value was extremely different and it makes a big difference, maybe on an isolated incident, but where you've just got corrections like that, I think you just need to make them and move on.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't overstepping my bounds uh for what you guys were wanting.
Oh, I agree.
When it comes to, when it comes to money of refunds or addition or anything like that, I think particularly at the MBOF, it's just corrections, make those corrections.
Okay, alright, I appreciate it. And then one other one, Greg Nielsen, he's the one had a lakefront property down on the lake, him and his wife came and he was wondering about if he got an appraisal, could he submit it? He called me a while ago and he got my email to, cause he got a appraisal or an appraisal done on it. He's like, he got my email to submit it, he didn't submit anything, but I think his the email was wrong because he called another time that same day. Jeannie corrected the email like three times when she was talking to him to get him to try to understand the right one. And he called again yesterday and I hadn't seen seen anything, I didn't know if we were waiting on the appraiser or what we were waiting on. And then he tried to email it this morning, so he emailed the appraiser, the appraisal this morning, but somehow the file was corrupted and I couldn't open it. I even got Brian to look at it and Brian couldn't open it, he said it was corrupted when it was either on the backend or the frontend, we don't know which. So we've asked him to resend it, um so I'll bring that probably to you in January, but just so you have a heads up.
My suggestion is is contact him and tell him to make a copy of it and put it in the mail.
That's what we've done, it's like, cause I said, you know, cause he's supposed to resubmit it and if that doesn't come through, then we'll just tell him to submit it in the mail because it's too late to hear it today anyways, but I wanted to while we were talking about the appeal situations, we have sixteen appeals going to the state. So that's a lot, that's the most I've ever had. So we'll see, I'm not sure, I'll try to do full-blown appraisals on them. I talked to Commissioner Cragan at the you, at my assessor school last week and he said now you, what date do you want those scheduled after, and so I told him June fifteenth because they try to schedule them in March and April and I'm so busy trying to get my tax bill closed, I can't make it all work and do justice for state appeals, so he assured me that they would try to schedule those after June fifteenth. And I know Anna Lisa was gonna put that in when she sent them down to request. Commissioner Cragan, C R A G U N, I think. And so he did talk to me about that because. And so he did talk to me about that because, um, like I said, it's just too hard to try to get it all done. There's, there's not enough of me to go around anymore. Alright, I have also some three personal property exemptions.
Also, just so you know, Kim, Mister, uh, Brian Noel is also getting an appraisal. So I'll, I'll forward you those emails so you kind of know.
Thank you.
He wants to do that.
What he want, what they're doing. Cause like I said, they should have done that before they came in at the first, uh, Board of Equalization. If they were gonna do that. I mean, I can accept them and look at them for next year for sure, but, you know. These late dates, it's. Kind of crazy. Especially when they already know the deadline and Mister Nelson, Greg Nelson come in, him and his wife were actually here.
The thing, the thing about it is, is our evaluation analysis come out and to. If they're really worried about their, their property value, they need to get their appraisal sold.
It's not free license, license.
To look at, I mean.
Just not.
You can't, you can't just come in and, you know, with Zulu, you know, listings and say you're wrong. I mean, if you're really. If you really feel like your evaluation, I mean, it's gotta go through the process. I mean, if they're that worried about it, then. And then, you know, you don't. I just, I don't have much sympathy for people who. Who don't wanna, if they, if they're serious about something, then get your ducks in a row and get your appraisal done and submit the documentation. So at the BOE. You've got some documents there that give some credibility to what you're saying about your value.
I, I agree. I agree wholeheartedly.
So, I, I mean, and then when you miss that deadline, um, you know, then, I mean, you knew very well.
Yeah, well.
Didn't like what we were, we talked to him about, so your value come out, you have thirty days after that and.
Yeah, well, all three of those, all three of those ad appointments here, they were actually here. And it was discussed well with them, I, I thought.
It is what it is.
So.
We'll let this, the tax appeals, that's their right to appeal the tax association, we'll let it, we'll let it follow its process.
I also had, um, Scott Sims and Worldmark that didn't supply us with any. Data to make a good decision on, and they have appealed to the state. So I've let them know, and I filled out my portion, I let them know. That they submitted absolutely nothing to the, to the county.
Well, they've appealed in years past. Maybe it's time we let the state ferret that out. I mean, they can't come to the state empty handed.
Yeah. Well, if they do, it's not gonna go very well.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Um, and one other thing also, while I'm thinking about it, they, the decision for Sanders. So this, the ones that sta- went to state appeal last year, I prevailed in all of them. But Sanders and Cisco Properties, which is San- Sanders and Sealy, are, have filed for a formal hearing. He did that once before, a few years ago. Sanders didn't because they just, they're doing what Kylie does, but. Anyway, he filed for a formal hearing a few years ago, and they changed their verdict, which they had found in favor of me and found in favor of him. And the next step was court, and we're so far out by the time, like, the, the appeal is twenty twenty two. They filed for a formal, and it, it won't be decided until sometime in twenty four. So it's, gets so far out, I don't have time to keep going backwards. But, so I think he was rewarded that time, so he's gonna try it again. But I submitted full blown appraisals on all four properties that went to the tax commission. And they, I did a good job and they found for me, so that's why I've requested them to be after the fifteenth, cause I just don't have the time. When I'm trying to meet that May twenty second deadline. And I've told them that, I, there's one of me, so it's like. You know, and we can try to get more appraisal help, but they're making five hundred dollars an appraisal. They're not gonna come and work even for eighteen dollars an hour, and I wanna thank you for that to get wages up. I know you've tried so hard over the last few years. And I for one appreciate it on behalf of my people and county employees.
Thanks.
I know you can't do it all at once, but the scary part is you guys move our wages and then the school moves their wages, and so. It's like, I wish one time they'd maybe stop ma- moving all their wages every year, but.
It's, it's the game, I mean.
It is, but I.
It's not the school districts, it's not their county or city.
But I do appreciate you working on behalf of our employees, you know.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for that, the helping, increased costs and things like that for taking care of your employees and mine as well.
We were forced into it. I'm just kidding. But I, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the application for exempt, exemptions of personal property tax presented by our assessor.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept, uh, exception for personal property tax presented by our assessor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, gentlemen. Do you have anything else for me today?
I don't believe so.
No, like I say, I appreciate you coming when these other guys are here, so that we got. You know what's going on and I don't.
Sometimes, when I talk to them so long ago and then they're, and then they, they're on commission meeting agenda, cause I can't do anything, and I've told them. A- after Bo- Board of Equalization passes, there's nothing that can, we can't change it. We have to go through you guys to do anything because at that time, it's an abatement or.
Yeah.
Uh, of taxes, so anyway, I appreciate you letting us come to you and appreciate all your work on our behalf, so.
Well, thank you for everything.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's, besides, we just got the drone, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, um. The search and rescue, I E Sheriff's Department would like to purchase a drone for, with a, with a rear on it for.
With a what on it?
Well, it's nighttime.
Oh.
Not visual, basically. Picks up, when it picks up is heat.
Body there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, they're understated, so they've sub- submitted a couple of options here. So being understated, um, we don't have to have other bids from other companies because they, these are the. This, this, uh. Uh, Armus. Uh, Unmanned Solutions, or R M U S, Rumus, Unmanned Solutions. So one, um. One bid is for thirteen thousand four oh two, and the other bid is for thirteen thousand six twenty eight. Um, the, uh, the one that's just a little bit more, has more battery life and, um. I don't think there was, there's, there's only about two hundred dollars difference, so. Um, I think I would make a motion that we authorize them to go ahead and purchase, um. I'm just looking at the. See if it comes up with a model number. I thought I had that figured out, but maybe not.
Could we just authorize an amount and they can pick the vendor? Or do we need to authorize vendor?
Not, well, they've already. Um.
They've already picked.
They've already picked.
Okay.
And I think we, uh, we go with the TVSR Pro, uh, company for the amount of thirteen six twenty six.
Okay.
For thirteen thousand six hundred twenty eight thirty six.
That's your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion and second that we go for the D I B S. For the.
The company?
T V S Pro. This is the, this is the bid that was, put that in your file and also put this with it. Documentation if you would.
For that set amount, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you say aye, Jay?
Aye, not opposed.
There. Motion carries. And I would say that I'd get the one with the bigger battery too.
I think that was, I think that was the biggest difference, if I remember right, I. I don't know, we were talking about two or three different things and. I didn't ever actually get to talk to Joey, I was just talking to Sheriff, so. Um, but it's, you know, when they, when they use one right now, it's usually garden, so you fire department that comes with it and. It felt like the search and rescue, um, maybe even using both at the same time for bigger searches, those kind of things, so.
I gotta think that they would be worth.
Well, if nothing else, you know, if nothing else about even not even on a search of putting him in the air and maybe you've got an accident and. You know, um, where we were talking today with Travis about, you know, you guys had that side by side rollover up there, put that in the, in the air and. And at least find out where it's at or something to that effect, or, you know, they've put it down on the beach before and, um, when they've had lost kids and. Um, those kind of things and put it in the air and had them look over, out over the lake, so. Anymore, I think that's the technology that's available to us and, I mean, you can cover so much more ground. You know, if the weather's right, you know, than putting somebody in a boat and having them drive around, cause. You can see a lot of things from the air that you can't see from the boat, particularly in the lake, in my mind, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's all I have, I think, I, that's all the business I've got, so. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn unless we have anything else.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's do it, do it.